Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our January 18, 2022 Town Council meeting. Hope everyone enjoyed a safe and service-oriented Martin Luther King Weekend. And Madam Clerk.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 24, 2021, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 2, 2021. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Present.
Councilman Rutherford?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Council President McCartney?
I am present.
We're going to start with our conference agenda, and on our conference agenda, we have asked our Senior Services Coordinator Laura Van Dyke to bring us up to speed on the Municipal Alliance Committee. And Laura is here.
Thank you, Susan. I appreciate it. Good to be here. And also welcome on here are two representatives from the Municipal Alliance, Steve Margiotis, and he'll be speaking shortly, and Bill Sullivan, who's our Chair. So it's great to have the moment here to speak a little bit about Municipal Alliance. Cindy Matute Brown was our council liaison for two years, and she helped us as we shaped our our action plan for our Municipal Alliance Committee. Now we welcome Tammy Williams as our new liaison. So I just wanted to explain a little bit. So one of our goals are to really raise public awareness, community awareness about this great resource that West Orange receives. It's another thing that really sets West Orange apart from other communities, I think, with something to celebrate. So I'm just going to explain a little bit. So Municipal Alliance is... So let me back up. So the Governor's Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse, they provide funding to municipalities throughout the state. And the source of that funding is derived from a DEADER fund. And what that is, it's Drug Enforcement Demand Reduction Fund. So basically, that's the... Those are the funds of fines collected from people who are convicted from drug offenses, and it's allocated to various alliances to do drug prevention work in their communities. So it's a great resource. When West Orange has received it for about 20 years, I've been involved for two and a half. And let's see here. So one of our goals was to come on to the council meeting and share this information. And basically, West Orange, I'm going, for many of these years, received a DEADER fund, so an allocation of about $57,000. Along with that comes the commitment to a cash match from the community of 25%, and then an in-kind support of 75%. So then in March of 2020, when COVID came, occurred, there was a freezing of funds. And then that following year, a tremendous reduction in funds. So we were reduced about 60%. So currently, our funding is... Our DEADER funding is $23,580.80. So quite a change. We met as a... Virtually as a committee to think, how are we going to best allocate that to our programs in the community? I'll share that, which programs are receiving it in a moment. But we realized we needed to use this lens of trauma-informed care as we're in this pandemic. And many of, you know, our residents were struggling with the impact of that. And then, as we know, you know, one could guidance around drug addiction and usage was greater than ever. So kudos to our programs that could pivot to a virtual format. A lot of creativity out there. And so that kind of became our priority for who could function under these conditions. So we have five programs in the community that receive this award in various amounts. We will be adding a page on the West Orange website that will be there for people to get more information about Municipal Alliance. So that will go into greater detail. But just to quickly mention that, so Cope Center is one of our programs, and they provide prevention programs through the library, through the middle schools, a lot of the parent programs that you may hear about often are provided through Cope. LEAD is... That is the after-school program facilitated through the West Orange Police Department. And we're hoping they'll be successful again in the spring with being able to do an in-person program. We have a third program that's called Community Awareness, and that includes West Orange High School and the middle schools where they do parent training, project graduation, and Red Ribbon Week. Another is Community House, where the Boys and Girls Club of America. And these are all evidence-based programs. So you have to... That's one of the requirements for the funding to receive funding is that one has such programs. And then our fifth program receiving funding this year is Main Street Counseling, who's been a recipient for some time. As I mentioned, Steve Margiotis, PhD, is on the call here today. He is the founder and executive director of Main Street Counseling, tremendously valuable resource to our community. In my different hats I wear, I often am just grateful that Steve and his therapists are around as they've been a tremendous resource beyond Municipal Alliance to the community with their virtual support and otherwise. So with their sliding scale fee. And then he's here today as well. So I'm going to just hand it over to Steve.
Thank you, Laura.
If you...
Thank you, Council. My name is Steve Margiotis. I'm the founder of Main Street Counseling, and I started Main Street in 1980. We are 42 years strong now. We're servicing over 400 to 450 clients a week with direct mental health services from preschool children to seniors. Part of our effort is prevention services and the grant we received from Laura and the Municipal Alliance. Primarily, we're now working with the Valley Settlement House, Degman House. We've been renting a house. And just before the pandemic, we started doing workshops at the West Orange Library. Our goal with the prevention seminars is education, talking about what alcohol and drugs are, alternative ways to cope. Besides addiction issues, it's been successful. We continue to go forward. We have not... Thank God, this to be during the pandemic. Our census is up. Our funding is up. The council's been quite supportive. And I think the other last piece is besides the funding, the credibility that we're backed by the town. And we're backed by the Municipal Alliance, and that helps tremendously with other funding sources. So I just briefly wanted to introduce myself and say thank you very much for all your help all these decades, actually.
If I could just add, so we have about 13 people on our Municipal Alliance Committee. Thank you, Steve, by the way. Thank you very much for your words. We do meet quarterly by Zoom or in person when time allows. We do have two openings for students. So I would just like to put it out there that I would welcome any student from West Orange High School and one from Seton Hall. If they're interested, they could reach out to me. And that would fill the need there. And again, be on the lookout for more information on the township website. And I guess the last thing, Steve, we wanted to mention that we are... One of our other goal, 2022 goals, is to have an in-person Town Hall-style meeting for the community on addiction and prevention and programming. Because that's what this is about. It's about prevention and awareness and self-esteem building and helping our kids make good choices.
Yeah, we're ready to go. I mean, border pandemic, that's one of the things we discussed, though. Ideally, in the next four months, six months, you know, we could do something in person.
Great.
That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
I can't believe... I'm sorry, Steve, I can't believe that it's been that long. When we first met at Community House, I don't remember the year that you just said, but I think that was back in the early 90s.
Yes, yeah, 1980. Actually, we met over three decades ago. We're still doing well. We're still doing well.
God bless you. It sounds it. And I really appreciate the fact that, you know, you're saying that with the township's support, it lends to the credibility that you have had all of these years.
Yeah, it's equally important. You have no idea. It's one of the first question, whether it's private foundations or county support, who else is on board? Who else supports you? And it means a lot that they're not the only one investing, and it's always been the key factor over the decades, not even over the years, over the decades.
Nicely, very nicely done. Thank you. And thank you. You know, it sounds like Councilwoman Matute Brown came in two years ago, just when you were at such a low level of funding. And so Cindy, thank you for your work too, laying that groundwork and building it back up. So hopefully, we can continue to do that. So Tammy, I see your hand raised. So you have your work cut out for you.
I do. I do. Thank you, Council President. I am so excited, Director Van Dyke, to hear that we're looking to do some type of in-person event. That's right up my alley. So excited. You know, my passion is mental health awareness. So this was a nice opportunity to liaison for this commission or board. So I'm looking forward to joining and creating even more opportunities from the foundation that has been previously laid by Councilwoman Matute Brown. So I'm excited. Look forward to it. We'll set up an opportunity for us to discuss next steps. The one question I did want to ask, because with the WOSAC Coalition, West Orange Stop Suicide Advocacy Coalition, we have started to introduce students who are engaged in suicide prevention and mental wellness. I have a student who attends school outside of the district, who is very interested in participating in this opportunity. She is actually looking to start coalitions in other municipalities similar to what we've done with our West Orange Police Department and the Mental Health Association of SXM Morris County. With that, I'm just interested or curious, is there an opportunity for someone who is already engaged in that arena, who is a West Orange resident, but doesn't attend? She goes to private schooling outside of the community. So just wanted to inquire, is there an opportunity for additional support? Or is it your priority to exclusively have those two schools engaged?
Thank you very much for your feedback and enthusiasm and your question. And you reminded me to mention that these meetings are open to the public. So there is a place for the public to, you know, they're posted quarterly. So certainly in that way. And while the ordinance states specifically West Orange High School and Seton Hall, I think there is a need that they come from each of those schools. That being said, she'd be more than welcome to attend our meetings in any way that we could be helpful, we would be. So thank you. And that enthusiasm is always welcome. So... So, and I did want to just say thank you to all of our volunteers, such as our Chair Bill Sullivan, who give their time, and various community members on our committee list here throughout, like Father Ferry from Our Lady of Lords and residents and such who give their time. So we do want the input, which is why we're trying to just really highlight what we did.
Thank you. And then finally, with Mr. Magos, is Main Street Counseling, are they also available for grief counseling? That was the inquiry that came to me yesterday, and since you were on the agenda, I wanted to inquire.
Oh, yes. One of the key things we're dealing with is loss, whether through physical death or abandonment, but it's one of the issues that comes up all the time. A lot of the situations start with depression and anxiety. But beneath that, there's loss. There's domestic violence. So we're quite experienced with the issue of loss unto itself.
Thank you. So you have a referral coming tonight.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Thank you, Council President. And thank you all for your great work that you've been doing, such important topics, especially the time of the pandemic. So if someone is watching tonight, Mr. Margiotis, how does one get in touch with you? Obviously, your website and whatnot, if you could just state it for the public, best way to make an appointment with Main Street Counseling?
I think the easiest thing is to call us up, 973-736-2041. We have all four office staff members manning the phones from eight in the morning till five, six at night. Two of them are bilingual as well. So that's probably the best way to do it, is to call our number.
And now you're located right off Prospect Avenue, correct?
Yes, we're on Marcella Avenue. I've been here for 20 years. Started on Main Street, hence the name.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much for all your work and
Thank you.
in the community so long.
Thank you for asking that, Councilwoman. So Bill Sullivan, Chair.
I just wanted to say that a couple of years ago, I was asked to chair this board. My understanding is in the years past, the programming had gone ahead, but the board itself had not really met in a while. And so I was asked to chair this. I just run the meetings, you know. These folks do amazing work. I just sit there and run the meeting and listen to them and learn. And I'm impressed every time by the commitment and the expertise that's involved with this whole group that's on there. They really are an asset to the community. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Excellent. Good to know. Very good to know. I think you have another tough year. COVID's not over. Crept right behind us, right into 2022. Are you still have your work cut out for you? People are still dealing with a lot of things. So yeah, you may be getting more calls after this meeting.
Oh, yes. We're ready.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Laura, I think you're still on.
I'm still on.
Well, I appreciate Councilwoman Castellino asking for the telephone number for contact because I think that's what's up next, next, a list of resources that can help others in the community.
It's true. I did add that in here, actually, right before the end of the day, Dorothy Sanders had passed that along. So, yeah, it is important at this time that people have a variety of resources and that will... I was going to be speaking to about support groups in the community for people feeling the need. So I did want to just briefly, I'll watch the time, but thank you for the opportunity to talk about senior services. And I was just going to give a little background, Susan, and just talk a little bit about...
Please.
Right, okay. So I arrived in this position two and a half years ago in 2019 along with my dear colleague, Noelia Perez. We met for the first time on our first day, and it's been a great partnership since that time. We were in our positions about nine months before the pandemic hit. So when we arrived, our goal was, okay, let's try to really jump in here and continue much of the programming that people have enjoyed, the recreational classes and trips and such. And then, and then let's kind of use a lens of where can we tweak, where can we tweak things? So in that, along that journey, Dorothy Sanders was hired as our Senior Livability Coordinator. So she really brought the lens of really highlighting the AARP's age-friendly communities, that the eight domains of livability, which includes things beyond just... There they are, beyond just social activities, but really, an age-friendly community would address all of these eight realms, which certainly apply to seniors and in truth, all members of the community. So we really try... So as Dorothy joined, we really tried to use this lens as we provided a variety of programming that was both social and recreational as well as educational and providing, you know, resources and topics on these matters. We then became designated an age-friendly community in June of 2020. And that was very exciting to have that designation and to really be committed, as the township is, to looking at decision-making through this lens. So we've, again, tried to really take that on in our programming. So then, once COVID hit, things came to a screeching halt as far as our planning in that these incredible pressing needs for food stemming from food insecurity and this desperate need changed our focus to getting food resources to our community, you know. I've spoken about this on here before, and groceries and such. And that was a tremendous initiative and partnership with restaurants in town, the food pantry, to just get in there and problem solve. So I really view that as a success. It's been a success, and it strengthened our ability to collaborate with community members. And that has continued. So I'm so grateful for those partnerships and those relationships. In terms of our programming, then, our seniors, a priority for our older adults is to help become more comfortable with technology. Put funding behind a technology consultant, created a video to help people get comfortable by Zoom, where our rec classes went on to Zoom, our workshops, mental health resources were provided through Zoom, and we still have a... We have a YouTube video that can help, that can help if someone were to need that, they could reach out to me. Right, so here, this is tremendous resource we have right here in our community. It's the Mental Health Association, their Hope and Healing. So you see all these variety of support groups that one can attend by Zoom that really appeal to many age groups here. But specifically, what now pandemic support group could be very helpful, support group for COVID-positive individuals and their loved ones, strategies for mindfulness, really. And, you know, you can be in the comfort of your own home and access some of these strategies and resources because, you know, many people are going through a very difficult time. And people are looking for healthy outlets and strategies. And so, again, another resource here in our community that we're grateful to have, and it's available to all. So thank you for posting that. So so we did, we, you know, so we're still in transition, right? We're still... We thought we were ready to go back in person for our recreational classes. We pulled that back. We're trying to navigate these decisions in the safest way possible, but also recognize that social isolation, it's taking its toll on people as well. So for that reason, we successfully were able to have three bus trips that we were consulted with the Health Department throughout 2021. How do we do this? Do we? Don't we? And we, you know, set the standard of being vaccinated. You had to be fully vaccinated. We limited the amount of people on the buses, and we held three successful trips. And we felt good about that because we know that the social isolation is taking... It's challenging, and you need strategies for it. So the Zoom rec classes, kudos to all of our older adults who pivoted and just learned new things. Thank you to our teachers who also pivoted. We're hoping to get back there to cats, so to be the first time in two years. We're hopeful. We'll, you know, please stay tuned on that. We had this wonderful project last year. I've talked about it a few times, our Legacy of Love Project, where our older adults wrote letters with their pearls of wisdom to our youth. It was then shared with our youth electronically. We're very proud of this. A range of our seniors, the oldest, I think, was 91, when he submitted his letter, very inspiring letters. This year, what we want to do is on its one-year anniversary, we're working on a collective art project. We love the lotus as the symbol of rising up through muck, and you blossom, and who knew you can grow beautiful things up from muck? Well, you can. So we're going... So stay tuned for what that's going to look like. But basically, we're looking to collect pearls of wisdom on one leaf. We're going to install it collectively at the library. The West Orange Public Library has a new adult reference librarian, Mary Ann De Angelis, wonderful resource for West Orange, tremendous collaborator. And we're excited with the few things we have percolating together. So, and that's one. So stay tuned for that. We're going to hold some listening sessions with our community in February because we want the feedback. We want to know how our older adults are doing, questions they may have. And questions do come our way and wondering, why don't we have this? Or we do like that. And there's room for all of those questions and answers. We very much appreciate the input we get from the community and our senior groups. They've been helpful to kind of help us plan and understand what's wanted and needed. And again, the feedback can be in all types. It doesn't just have to be good or just bad. We'll take all types. And I do, our master, we have a tremendous relationship with the Rutgers Master Gardeners, who have guided us through the pandemic and literally helped our older adults grow during a challenging time, and that symbolism really was very sustaining for so many of our residents. And we're looking to do more with them and include the greater community as well. And I'll say one last thing, because I've been talking way too long, which is we have just a local author going to speak. She wrote, Rebecca Hardeman from South Orange, wrote "Good Eggs." She's going to come to the library and speak. We're collaborating with the library. It's a great book with a... One of the main characters is 83, and she's feisty and hilarious. And we're looking forward to chatting with Rebecca about that. So feel free to reach out. I think you're going to post my, our contact information. And we're just really looking forward to more collaboration within the township, outside of Town Hall. And we're very open to the feedback, so.
Oh, my goodness. Laura, thank you so very much. We definitely have to have you back so you can, you know, keep us posted. I love the idea of writing. I know the West Orange Arts Council wants to get involved with that creative writing legacy with you. So that could be a partnership. I love the idea of brainstorming. It sounds like you're already doing so much, but the fact that you're so hopeful and open to even more ideas and creating more program is just really beautiful. So thank you very much. Yep, Bill, Steve, we wish you the very, very best.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your time. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Do we want to quickly, councilpeople, talk about council liaison appointments? Or hold that till later?
I think you... Council President, yeah, I think it's up to you. I just looked at it at 7 o'clock. I'm okay with holding it till later, if you are.
Sounds good. We went so far over last time, so I'll be conscientious. Madam Clerk?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 24, 2021, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 2, 2021. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilwoman Matute Brown? Councilman Rutherford?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Present.
Council President McCartney?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the rich, poor, and the privileged.
For which it stands.
One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, Madam Moderator, if we have anyone in the public that would like to.
Do you want to go to historic preservation first or?
You know what? Let's do that. Uh, so we did bypass our council liaison announcements. And I know that Councilwoman Williams serves on the Historic Preservation Commission. And we do have the Chair of the Historic Preservation, Brian Feeney, and former Chair or Vice Chair, Marty Filowitz, and my neighbor for over 30 years, um, here to talk about a resolution that is on our agenda. Councilwoman Williams, would you like to say a few words or?
So I, I would certainly like to just introduce our, our Chair and former Chair for doing such a wonderful job with our historic preservation in the township of West Orange. It has been my privilege as well as a pleasure to serve on this commission for the past year. Um, it has certainly given me a tremendous amount of insight about the properties that are or should be historically designated in the township of West Orange. So I would like to commend the commission for its just continuity, continuing to recognize what in West Orange should be, be, should be preserved. Um, and, and their just steward fastness. So I appreciate them for that. And I, I welcome them to present the resolution that's for this evening.
Thank you so much. I see Madam Moderator has moved Marty Filowitz over to our panel. Marty?
I have not seen Brian.
Okay.
If he's here, can raise his hand. If not, Marty can take.
Marty?
Yes. All right. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, first of all, I want to thank Councilwoman Williams for being the liaison from, from the council to the HPC. Uh, it's been, uh, an interesting year, just as last year was an interesting year. We have been meeting once a month on Zoom. And, uh, we recently forwarded five projects or five properties to the Planning Board for their, uh, action on, on our recommendations. And I believe they'll be coming your way shortly. But, and in the meantime, we had an opportunity to apply for a grant uh, up to $15,000. That's the maximum allowed, uh, which is administered by the New Jersey State Historic Preservation Office. We call it SHIPO, uh, just to save a mouthful. And it, it, it's, the grant will be a continuation of the surveys of properties which we are mandated to do in order to remain a member of CLG, uh, Certified Local Government. So we, we have done since 2014, five dif- different, uh, four different areas, actually four grants covering five different areas of West Orange. Uh, we'd like to do three more areas. And, uh, we have a list of 111 properties that's spread out between the Watchong Heights area, uh, the Eagle Rock area, which is immediately next door to Watchong Heights, and the Hutton Park area. These are three areas that are actually contiguous to the previous areas that have been surveyed. So this sort of continues to, uh, map the area, the earliest areas, actually, the, the 18th and 19th and early 20th century era of West Orange. And what we're really just asking for tonight is for a resolution by the council enabling us to proceed. Uh, this application is due on Friday. We've spoken to the consultant who is working on it. And, uh, they're in decent shape. They actually expect to submit it Thursday. It'll be submitted electronically as well as a hard copy delivered directly to the SHIPO office. So, uh, I'm here tonight really to answer any questions any of you may have. Uh, I know Brian had a sort of a double booking tonight, so he may come in later. But, uh, right now, I, I, my capacity as Vice Chairman will be happy to answer any questions.
Aliks, any questions?
Nope.
I, I will just add that, um, Council President, if I may. I will just add that currently it is my understanding that we have 10 properties designated as historical designation properties in the township of West Orange. Um, so just wanted to make sure everyone knows that we do have 10 properties currently designated as historical properties. Pending for additional properties, um, pending approval.
Those are already designated and five more to come on board.
Four more have been approved. Four more have been approved, 10 already in existence. And four more additional have been approved by the Planning Board as well as the commission.
Yes. Thank you. Marty, good luck with the grant.
All right. Thank you very much, Susan. I appreciate your, your support through the years. And it was also nice being your neighbor.
Okay. You're most welcome. Thank you. Okay.
Right.
Good night and stay safe.
Okay, we cannot go to Joseph Fagan now. Hang on one second. Oh, he moved.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and a good evening to you, Madam President. I am Joe Fagan, Public Information Officer, and thank you for the opportunity to address the West Orange public this evening. I have just a brief announcement to make this evening regarding a traffic alert for residents of Walker Road. A week ago Monday, the New Jersey American Water Company began construction of a new 12-inch water main on Walker Road. Work is scheduled to take place on weekdays, weather permitting, beginning at 7:00 AM and continuing until 4:30 PM. The construction will start at Northfield Avenue and proceed towards Undercliff Terrace South. The work will take approximately three to four weeks to complete, uh, providing inclement weather causes no delays. During the daytime construction hours, access to Walker Road will be prohibited from Northfield Avenue. Um, so if you're planning on traveling in that area, I just wanted you to be aware of the water main construction going on. And of course, residents of Barringer Court will always be granted access to their homes. For information on the project, you may contact New Jersey American Water Company, Fred DeSylvia, directly at 973-564-5728. Once again, that's Fred DeSylvia, 973-564-5728. And all this information is posted on our website. In case you missed it yesterday due to bad weather and couldn't get out, playback of the West Orange Human Relations Commission Annual Program, honoring the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., has been posted to the West Orange Facebook page for viewing in its entirety at your convenience. The whole program posted is just a little under an hour and I urge everyone to watch it for a, uh, inspirational message. Uh, finally, I would like to leave you this evening with a thought to ponder. More of a measurement on just how far we have come. On October 13th, 1992, which still seems like yesterday to me, the West Orange Township Council passed an important ordinance, one that unanimously passed allowing residents to work from home. It specifically addressed or permitted fax machines, computers, and modems for use in a home office. Certain guidelines were set forth, but mostly that the home business cannot be visible from the street or affect the character of a residential neighborhood. It almost seems comical by today's standards, but as I said, it serves today as a measurement of technology advancements, especially in the age of Zoom meetings to which are now an important part of how we conduct business. Oh, and one other thing. This was reported on in the West Orange Chronicle at the time by none other than Anthony Paglisi, who I am sure is on the call tonight. Even then, 30 years ago, Mr. Paglisi was keeping us all informed as he reported and told us of greater things to come. That's all I have for this evening, Madam President, and have a good meeting.
Thank you so much, Joe. Thank you.
Next up is Sean Gaynor. Could you state your name and address for the record?
Good evening, Council. Uh, my name is Sean Gaynor. I live at 74 Reynolds Avenue in Hanover, New Jersey. I'm a West Orange firefighter, uh, one of the seven that is still out on unpaid leave. First, I want to thank you for your time. Um, and I just want to give you an update of what happened since the last meeting. Unfortunately, I'm still disappointed to tell you that the seven firefighters and the six police officers are still out of work. Um, it's been about 95 days since we were out on unpaid leave. I'll just give you a background on me. Uh, I've been a firefighter and I know most of you, um, if I don't, I'm sure I'll meet you soon. Um, I've been a firefighter for 24 and a half years. Over those years, I served this community with all of my heart. I created softball fundraisers between the police and fire. And for the Burn Foundation, I ran toy drives and helped in any way I could. Um, I have been injured in fires, um, that needed neck, shoulder, and bicep surgeries. I responded to Ground Zero on 9/11, um, where I contracted renal cell carcinoma on my left kidney. I'm also a proud Navy veteran. Um, I was deployed to the Persian Gulf in 1992. So I spent most of my life serving this public. Um, I have a beautiful wife, Amber, and two kids. Luke, seven, and Hannah's three years old. Both very cute. Um, I just have a few questions and a few more statements. Um, I contracted COVID-19 one year ago from a coworker who contracted it from a resident. Right? So at least, at least six of us firefighters have natural immunity to this virus. At least six of us have actually contracted it. To this day, my doctor tells me with my high antibodies, I really don't need the, the shot. But I get it. So, uh, Mr. Gross, I can almost understand the thinking that went into this. I mean, you, you thought people, you know, you wanted people to be vaccinated. And that was months ago. You thought people that were vaccinated would not contract or spread this virus. And I, and I understand. Um, but since then, that was over 100, um, that was over 100 days ago. So we know that, um, through time and science that, um, that has changed, right? So, so that's different now. Um, so we know, we now know the vaccinated as well as the unvaccinated can contract and spread this virus. The CDC and even Dr. Fauci stated this. Um, over, unfortunately, over 25 of my coworkers, uh, that were fully vaccinated have contracted this. Most of which have been since we've been out. Um, we thought after learning this, um, and knowing the hardship to fill positions, uh, without holding over, overworked firefighters, we would have been notified to return to work. Sadly, that wasn't the case. The whole reason we are out on unpaid leave is because we were thought of as a health risk to our fellow coworkers and the township residents. We now know that isn't the case. It isn't any different from our vaccinated coworkers that are still being paid and being able to help the residents. Unfortunately, none of us, unfortunately, none of these available vaccines in the US are fully FDA-approved yet. Maybe if the time was, enough time was put into this, as far as, uh, making them better vaccines and safety, we'd be in a different situation. So to lose our jobs based on something that's found to be untrue is kind of baffling and confusing to us. The seven of us firefighters and six police officers, um, just don't understand why we don't have our jobs at this time. I know I have 30 seconds, but I, I, I'm almost done. So I know Mr. Gross did reach out the next day, but I'm not going to get into contractuals, contractual stuff, what's going on in back. We, we've, we've never given, it's okay, man. We've never given a, uh, we're given a meeting yet. Um, we, we want to come back to work. So, Mr. Gross, will you please help put an end to this? Please commit to giving us a meeting. It's, it's been two weeks since the last, last, uh, meeting. Can you please schedule a meeting with us? We just want it to be fair. But we also don't want the township residents to lose any taxpayer money to give into lawyers to fight against seven firefighters and six police officers. I just want their job back. That's all we want to do is be able to come and help the residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sean. Next up is Patty. Please state your name and address for the record. Patty?
Hello?
Hi. State your name and address, please, for the record.
Patty Ryan, 36 Old Indian Road, West Orange.
What are you doing?
I don't know. Go ahead.
Computers near each other. There you go. One has to mute.
Are you muting? No.
Trying to.
Okay, I was just calling regarding the, Joe, could you turn that off? Sorry.
Sorry. I don't know how to turn it off.
I was just calling about the stop sign on the Old Indian Road and Ridgeway Avenue.
Okay, what about it?
Is that going to happen? I got a letter from Lenny Lepore that we were supposed to discuss that at seven o'clock.
Council President.
Uh, Ken, do you?
As the President, I, I don't know if everybody can hear, but, um, that's really something that should be discussed when the ordinance comes up. And I, uh, she's right. Um, Lenny did send a letter indicating that that meeting would start at seven o'clock, but the actual consideration of that ordinance is not going to take place until sometime later tonight.
Oh, okay.
So Ms. Ryan, if you can hang on for a little bit, we will get there and then answer your questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next up is Michael Cassidy.
I'm going to go.
State your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Council President, Council members. Michael Cassidy, President, West Orange PBA Spears Officers Association. We are proud property owners of One Carrie Street, making us in the PVA the only township unions to have 100% of its members, property taxpayers in the township of West Orange, including the Special Improvement District Act. We have a vested interest in ensuring the township thrives and continues to be a desirable place to live, work, and play. After the contentious labor negotiations of the past 10-plus years, we're hoping not to have to come back before you. The past few years have been difficult on everyone. And I know no matter what decision you make during the crisis will be second-guessed. Our members came to work throughout the crisis knowing that they or their families could be placed at risk. I'm not going to talk about the merits of the COVID vaccine policy, but as well, we all know the vaccine has provided to be ineffective against the latest strain. And a great number of our members have lived through the COVID despite being vaccinated, including myself. I watched the council meeting on December 14th and had a chuckle when I heard the township attorney chime in that the legal challenge was rejected by the Superior Court of New Jersey. I'm happy to report that the decision is being appealed, but would really be more interested in what the Advisory Committee on Judicial Conduct and Office of Attorney Ethics would have to say. At the last council meeting, Business, Business Administrator Gross stated, "We are all heartbroken and we have not walked away from the table." I'm going to read an email from BA Gross dated December 22nd, 2021. "Due to the lack of written response from the police officer unions to the originally proposed agreement presented by the township, and given the recent spike in COVID cases worldwide caused by the now dominant..." and given the recent spike in COVID cases worldwide caused by the now dominant Omicron variant, which is highly contagious, the township has decided to withdraw its original offer to allow any employees to return to work without being vaccinated. The township position is based on numerous federal, state, and local authorities who have determined that the only way to stop this pandemic is for people to get vaccinated, and thus is taking action to protect the safety and health of its residents, businesses, and employees. Township remains willing to continue to discuss and negotiating over this topic as circumstances change. I can assure you that the SOA and PBA would like nothing more than to resolve this issue and are available to meet at any time to resolve this matter. The bigger problem is that since the current administration implemented layoffs and demotions in two thousand and eleven, we have not been over a hundred officers down from one hundred and twenty-two in the first decade. Yesterday, the third officer in less than two years resigned and was sworn in just a few hours ago to another agency. We wish Officer McClellan, who was acknowledged by Mr. Fagan last council meeting, the best of luck." That brings us to ninety-nine officers. Four in the academy, three are on military leave, three more will retire by March first. Once the township moves to terminate the six officers who have not been vaccinated, you can see the numbers dwindle quickly. Now the elephant in the room. Sixteen officers are eligible to retire this year. If half retire and we are unable to bring the unvaccinated officers back, we could easily fall below eighty officers. We saw the heroics last month when an unarmed off-duty officer quickly took action to intervene, and our members were able to apprehend two actors after last week's incident. They continue to go out and go above and beyond to keep the residents safe despite the current working conditions. I remind you that this used to be an agency where we used to hire many more officers who transferred in than we lost to transfers. Make no mistake about it, there were several officers looking elsewhere and expect to lose another officer shortly to another agency. There are many agencies hiring, including the Port Authority Police, which makes it difficult to hire and retain officers. We are here to do our best and continue providing the best services that our residents deserve and expect, but we can't do it alone. We need the councils and the administration's support, and it cannot wait until tomorrow. The first step is to bring our unvaccinated members back and allow testing, just like the West Orange Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Next up is Scott Ackerman. State your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, this is Scott Ackerman. I live at eighty-eight Edgewood Avenue. I am calling because I'd like to speak in favor of making the intersections of Rock Spring and Edgewood and Fairview and Edgewood into multiway stops. Reason being that my children attend the St. Cloud Elementary School, and the Rock Spring intersection in particular is, is quite dangerous. As cars go through, they're at high speed, and with the position, if you haven't been there in person with the hill, cars coming up from both sides towards the crosswalk are not stopping. It's very difficult to see if any cars are speeding up the hill towards you. In fact, realistically, you have to step into the intersection to see if any cars are coming. This can be particularly dangerous for kids who aren't aware of incoming traffic. Also, with the path there that leads down to the St. Cloud School, there are a lot of kids crossing on their way to and from school, so this intersection really needs more control, and a stop sign would be a big improvement. And that is what I wanted to say about the, about the intersections. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That ordinance is on for discussion when we get to our second and final reading.
Council, Council President, it, it, it may be worth noting for everybody who is listening, who's on the meeting, who wants to comment on that ordinance. The council meeting is the appropriate time to do so, but this is not the right time to do it. We should, the comment should come during public comment when the ordinance is taken up for consideration. That way, there'll be a record of, of the comments. So I just, you know, if there's anybody else who wants to comment on that, they should really wait until the ordinance is taken up later in the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. Thank you.
Next up is Rosary Morelli. There's a weird, a weird notice coming up for her. Rosary, have you, it's, it's asking to promote to panelists. Is that okay? You can keep your camera off. Not sure what that. I, I think.
Met a moderator in the past because she has an older version of Zoom. The former moderator has had to transfer her over and ask her to keep her camera off so that she can make her comments.
Okay. I think that she went away. Maybe she will come back again. We'll, we'll see if that's the case. So we'll go to Darren. Please state your name and address for the record. Sorry, there you go.
Hi, Darren Tobia, twenty-four Columbia Street. I was once hopeful that the option to attend town council meetings remotely would increase public participation in local government. That doesn't seem to have happened, and I, I wonder why. And I also wonder whether there has ever been, you know, in some initiative, like a focus group, to find out what, what would increase attendance in town, at town council meetings. Has the town council ever considered, in addition to Zoom, broadcasting the meetings in other places such as Facebook or YouTube? These social media sites don't require copying and pasting a link, which I, sometimes I think is a barrier to entry. It is, it, it is impossible to gauge a resident's position on topics without a significant attendance, and Facebook, Facebook groups like four one one and oh seven oh five two are not really a substitute, although they sometimes function as one. Thank you so much. Bye.
Thank you, Darren, for your comments.
Okay, I found Rosary. If she's still.
Rosary, you are on the screen. Okay, maybe we can mute Darren. Let's see if Rosary is available.
Let me, I was, we promoted Rosary to a panelist, so she's, hang on, let me find her. One second, I'm sorry.
Have a lullaby? We could.
Okay, I don't see Darren anymore.
No, he's still on the screen, and he's still unmuted.
Hi, Darren. There we go. Okay. I found him. We're back to Rosary.
There's still no response there.
Excuse me, Council President, maybe she could call in. I, I know she's called in before, and she's able to get on the meeting.
Yeah, when you call in, your phone number usually shows up. This says her name, so.
Yes, it's probably on the computer.
We just got a notification that she left the meeting, so she's no longer even available.
Okay. Are there any other members of the public that would like to be heard? Yes. Somebody by the name of Sorties, please state your name and address for the record.
It's Sumara Ortiz, and it's ninety-one Edgewood Avenue. I just put S. Ortiz because my first name is way too long. Thank you very much, Council. As a first-time council meeting attendee, I'm not quite sure what the rules are and how we should proceed when we comment and how we join. I received one of these flyers in my mailbox regarding the stop sign, and so I now understand that I should wait, but I just wanted to state for the record that there is no way for someone like me, who was new to West Orange, just barely a year, to know that I would have had to log on at seven, which is what the letter tells me to do, and then wait to talk about the stop sign. So I, too, like Mr. Scott Ackerman, I believe his last name was, would be waiting now for thirty minutes, anxious to discuss this topic, because I have a six-year-old who attends St. Cloud Elementary, and not know that I'm to wait. Do you understand? So maybe that should be included, perhaps, in these letters that go out in the mail, a little bit more instruction so that we know and are encouraged when we join these meetings, because this is my first one ever, to recognize that there is a certain routine and a rhythm to how these meetings go. And it would also encourage us, now that we know we want to be a part of this community, to understand how it flows. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Thank you.
Council President, she makes a very good point. Unfortunately, of course, there's no way for us to know exactly when ordinances are going to be, come up for consideration, because we don't have any way of knowing how long public comment will take, and public comment generally comes first. What I'm going to suggest is a possibility, because there may be yet other people who are still on the meeting who want to address that ordinance. You could vote to go out of order and, and take it up, I think, now, and, and I think that might solve the problem.
I do appreciate that, and in light of what Ms. Sortes just said, I would appreciate that if we take this out of order, because there are still fifty-seven participants on, and many may be.
Right. That's why, that's why I chimed in, because there, there may be many people who want to comment on that.
Madam Moderator, are there more hands raised?
There seems to be only two. And, oh, and Anthony Puglisi. And Rosary's back.
I think I would like to finish up this public comment, and then we will go out of order with the ordinance. Okay?
Very good.
Okay, great. So we're going to go to Lou Pisitano. Sorry, I spelled, sent your name wrong.
No, it's close enough. It's Lou Pichano. I wonder if you can hear me.
Yes. State your name and address.
Yeah, this is going to be right on point. I'm a twenty-nine-old Indian, literally looking at the stop line painted where the stop sign would be going, should you put it up. So, you know, definitely interested, I guess, have something to say.
Okay. Yes, we're going to finish that public comment and move right to that ordinance for discussion.
Okay, so would you rather wait? I'm sorry. Should I?
Yes, please.
Okay, wait, sure.
I'll take everything up on time.
I'll go to mute.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so is there anyone else other than Anthony Puglisi that would like to ask a question other than the stop sign ordinance? We have Rosary Morelli. I'm gonna, we're gonna try one more time. Rosary, you should be good to go. State your name and address for the record. I'm not sure why she can't get through. Hang on one second. If you unmute, you should be good to go.
How's that?
Nice. There you go.
You got me?
Yeah.
Sorry. Come back, and you can't even let me speak? Anyhow, I have two subjects I'd like to discuss tonight. First of all, kudos to Laura Van Dyke, Nwilia Perez, Dorothy Sanders, and Councilwoman Casselino, who did an outstanding job in getting the senior programs and our senior group at the top of the line, where people want to be like West Orange, where we used to want to be like other towns.
I'm sorry, may I have your name and address for the record?
Ralph Road. R A L P H Road. Okay?
Yes.
Okay, well, it's doing such a good job. I just want to mention the fact that I even played pickleball this last summer, and that was a big effort on my part, but it was great. Had big turnouts for all the programs that they started, so that means they're a success. That's how I measure it. The other is, I'm trying to wrap my head around what this all means when we talk about our township is in need of rehabilitation. Is it the entire township? What do they mean by rehab, rehabilitation? I just can't understand. Can someone explain to me how a whole town, all at once, has deteriorated to the point where it needs to be rehabilitated? I'd appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Great. So any other members of the public before we go to Anthony Puglisi? All right, Anthony, you're up.
Good evening. This is Anthony Puglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiVincenzo. I just want to thank Joe Fagan for the little shout-out at the beginning. Thank you for reminding me that I'm old. Just very briefly, today we sent out a press release about the Holly Lake Spectacular at Turtle Bag Zoo, and this is just testament, not only to the generosity of people of West Orange, but the generosity of people from Essex County. This was the thirteenth year that we did the Holly Lake Spectacular. We had over a hundred and eleven thousand people come out, and when they came to the event, we asked that they bring non-perishable food, used winter coats, and new toys to benefit the less fortunate, and we accepted over eighteen tons of items. Both the attendance and the amount of items taken in were the second-highest totals in the event's history. The, in, I think it was two thousand and sixteen, we had an even better year. So we just want to thank everyone for their support, for coming out, and really, that's all I have for this evening. Have a great meeting.
Thank you, Anthony, very much, always.
Okay. Council President, last call for any other members of the public outside of the stop sign ordinance. Okay. I'm not seeing any other.
Before I ask John Gross to speak about the police and fire and where we are with these meetings, I wanted to respond to Darren. Darren Tobia talked about how to increase attendance. I think I want to say my experience is that Darren, even you yourself, have reached out. People do call council all the time. We are all very accessible. They don't necessarily have to attend a meeting for us to respond to any of their concerns or any of their questions. I can attest that all of our council members are responsible and responsive to our residents, and maybe they don't feel that they need to attend a council meeting. They know that we are here to serve them and to be as responsive as the, all of our meetings are recorded, and they are posted on the website and on YouTube, so people can access them and access us at any point. I do appreciate your, your comments, though. And to Rosary's concern about the township native rehabilitation, it, it was a resolution that was passed based on a study with the planning board and also a letter received from our township engineer about our infrastructure being over fifty years old that the township would qualify as an area need of rehabilitation, which means that what was established was that residents can do work on their home, and the assessment of that improvement would be held in abeyance for five years to give them time to, to pay that additional assessment. So it, that's, that's how I can sum it up, is that the structure of our, our town, our infrastructure of our town is old enough to qualify to be designated an area need of rehabilitation. And I appreciate everyone waiting for the ordinance, and if, John, you can address, please.
Oh, Council President, I, I, you know, I'm gonna, I'm sorry to interrupt, John, but I, I think as is clear from the comments that were made by the firefighters and police officers. I think as is clear from the comments that were made by the firefighters and police officers with respect to the litigation, it is a matter in litigation, and I'm going to suggest that it's really not appropriate for the council to respond to the comments that were made because it's in litigation. Anything you say could prejudice the case. I think we all have feelings about this and all of us recognize it, but this is not a matter for a council meeting. It's a matter in court. It's a legal matter. So there's really nothing that you can comment on with respect to it that's going to be helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Kizer. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yeah, yes, Council President, and this is not my, you know, answers to my other questions, but to address Mr. Kizer's comments, which I do appreciate because as we are put in that situation, therefore, I like to recommend, whether it's done at the end of the meeting, is I like to make a motion for the council to go into executive session if we're able to to discuss and get updated on this negotiation because I was hoping by this meeting, this would have been resolved and quite disappointed that it's not. So can I make that a motion, Mr. Kizer?
Sure, you can make the motion. I guess the only thing that concerns me is I don't know that we have a lawyer who's involved in the litigation. I'm not handling it, obviously. I don't know who is. I don't know that they're available. If they were available, I think it would be certainly all right for them to advise the council in executive session. I just don't, again, I'm not handling the litigation. I just know it's in litigation.
Is it appropriate for Mr. Gross to be able to update on us on what he knows, or do we all have to make phone calls individually tomorrow morning?
To the extent that he can, but again, he's not a lawyer. He's presumably a witness in the case. So, you know, while he may be able to make some comments, I'm a little reluctant to have a discussion about a legal matter without the lawyer who's handling it present.
So, Council.
And I don't know what Mr. Chang's involvement is in that litigation, so I can't, and I don't know what his availability is tonight. I don't see him on. We haven't talked today, so.
Well, I respect your, you know, your recommendation, but if this isn't resolved by the next meeting, I highly, I'm going to request that we do have an executive session to be brought up to date as a group, and I'll be making my phone call in the morning to get an update.
And I think you certainly should be able to arrange that.
So, Councilwoman Castellino, yes, we will put executive session resolution on our next agenda, and hopefully something will happen between now and February first, when our time for our next, in next meeting, and to reach out to our Labor Council who is working on this. Okay?
Thank you, Council President. Whenever, you know, the rest of my comments I'll make when it's my turn.
Oh, yeah, it's your turn. Okay.
Okay, thank you. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, Mr. Kizer, but this is very disheartening to be hearing heartfelt messages from our firefighters once again in this pandemic. You know, I'll know my feelings about that. We even went there with this mandate to begin with, and just disappointed this is where we're at right now with the whole situation. With that being said, going to answer the other speakers. You know, Mr. Fagan, great fun fact tonight about Mr. Puglisi. Thank you for that, and thank you for all the work that you've been doing with our downtown app. We didn't do our report yet, but Public Relations Commission's been working really hard with our downtown alliance group to get the information from all our business owners and restaurant owners to get our townwide mobile app up and running to inform all our residents. So we look forward to that being launched, hopefully soft launch next month. Rosary, just want to thank you for your kind words. It was always a pleasure to work with you and moving forward with our senior programs and and, you know, great job with Laura Van Dyke and Noelia and Dorothy Saunders, and even our Health Department, our former Director Teresa Nova and Susan Giudetta. Great, great job, you know, rather, always, you know, working hard for the Partners for Health Grant in order to give us great funding to move forward with all those initiatives. Just to share, you mentioned pickleball, but it was so great to see that we were able to have the senior picnic this year, and we're expanding the garden right outside Toby Cat Center. So we hope two thousand and twenty-two, we're able to do more and we'll be able to meet together with that. Let's see, our other speakers, and that's pretty much it tonight. Mr. Tobia, you know, to Councilwoman Courtney's points, we also advertise that people do know when the meetings are. They're highly advertised. And I feel attendance has picked up with, you know, with the Zoom because it's just so convenient for folks to come on the meeting, and that's it. So just, you know, we have the comments for the ordinance, but Mr. Gross, you know, I'll get an update tomorrow, but really, really upset to have to to see that we're not, you know, we haven't settled yet with our unions. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Two Brown?
Thank you, Council President. Just want to thank Mr. Fagan for that announcement. I know I reached out to Lenny earlier today to answer some questions for some residents who were concerned about the time and duration of the construction work on Walker, simply because the buses are interrupted and obviously running late. But good to know that Mr. Fred De Silva is the contact, and I have shared that information already, so thank you for sharing. He may not be very happy tomorrow, but certainly the right source to go to, so thank you very much. And that was really, really interesting, the thirty years ago comment with Mr. Puglisi. What stood out to me, Mr. Puglisi, was not that you were old, but just your long-term dedication and commitment to public service. Thank you for that. That's incredible. I will, obviously, I, when I was listening to the comments of the firefighter that came on and Lieutenant Cassidy, who I have great respect and admiration for, you know, I was wondering whether or not we were still in litigation, and because of that litigation, I am unfortunately not going to be able to comment on that. I would like the council to be advised as to during our executive session, whether or not this is the civil litigation lawsuit, or or is this coming from the actual PBA and FMBA? And Ms. Ryan Skater, that was all for a the ordinance for this evening. Ms. Morelli, I just wanted to elaborate and just clarify the comment that was responded to by Council President with respect to the area need of rehabilitation. It's not that the rehabilitation is because there are our sewer systems, our water systems are all well over fifty years old, the infrastructure as well as the housing stock, and it is something that benefits our residents who want to improve their housing, their homes or any infrastructure connected to their homes because while it's not an advance, it is a five-year incremental increase of that new assessment for any work that has been done on the home. So it's not, you know, an assessment that you immediately pay, but you start paying percentages of it from year one through five, and year five, you'll be at one hundred percent assessment for any rehabilitation that you have incorporated into your home. Ms. Tobia, this is a conversation that I had last year while I was council president with our former Madam Moderator, who does all of the library media drama clubs and teaches at the high school and actually runs their Board of Ed meetings as well. They are able to livestream on Facebook and YouTube the benefit that they have that we do not have is that the Library and Media Center is just that. It is a media center, so it is well-equipped with the technology that's necessary. For us to do it in Town Hall, it would be quite expensive. And the streaming does not provide those who are watching outside of being in the actual meeting, any ability to comment. You can, you know, write a letter, make your comments that way, but there is only streaming capability. So while it was discussed, it is something that's quite expensive for the township to undertake. And to Councilwoman Castellino's point, there has been a heightened attendance. We recognize it because when we sat in town chambers, Town Hall chambers, perhaps four people would show up routinely, unless there was a major issue. But, you know, we do try to get everybody engaged and involved. The lifestyles and other obligations keep people from being able to participate. But if live streaming is something that, you know, we can discuss with the understanding that we would not be able to answer any comments or take public questionings, and even that's a question that we've discussed, whether or not that is allowable or permissible under the Robert's Rules of Orders in the Open Public Meetings Act, whether or not you can hold a meeting and not allow those who are attending the meeting to make a public comment. But I think that we all do our best to try to make sure that we respond to our residents in timely fashions through email, but, and it is posted. So I don't know how much more. I know you mentioned a survey. If we've considered that, I don't think that the council as a whole has discussed that. But certainly, thank you for giving us food for thought as well. And to Ms. Ortiz, you're also calling, and so was everyone else, about the four-way stop sign. I do just want to point out that on the agenda, there's, and it's not times because to our attorney Kizer's point, we never know how long public comment is going to be, but typically just informational only. Ordinances on first reading and second reading are always at the end of the agenda. Ordinances on first reading, there is no public comment. However, on second reading, there is a hearing where you can comment from the public, and that's this particular instance for this ordinance on second reading. So just wanted to give you that little bit of information, just moving forward as you begin to engage into into your new community and welcome. That's it for me, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you for your insight with the social media specialist at the high school. Councilman Rutherford?
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Kizer, I certainly will respect your request that we not discuss the labor matters in a public meeting. I am interested to know if we can identify during this council meeting who the attorney is that is assigned to that case? And if so, is it possible to get them for an executive session later on tonight?
I would have to, John Gross, I think, knows that information, and I can one way or another communicate with him, and we can see if that can be done.
Depending on what aspect of it, there's actually at least two firms, maybe three. So it's not as simple as finding a particular person.
So I would, I think it is that important to reach out and get as many of them present tonight as possible, if possible. Can we do that?
John, you know better than me. I mean, if you can get me the information, I can try to do a little legwork myself, but I don't know if it's possible or not, quite honestly. I can give it a try. We can see what we can do, but I'm not.
I can reach out and, you know, try to find out if they're available.
I do appreciate.
And then if they are available, we could, you know, have a, we'd have to enact a resolution from the floor requiring four votes, which shouldn't be a problem to have the executive session, just procedurally.
Certainly. So I will leave that to you, gentlemen, and trust that you'll give the best effort. Hopefully, we can make some progress on that tonight. Thank you, Mr. Fagan and Mr. Puglisi, as always, for your timely comments. Mr. Gainer, I wish I could comment further. Unfortunately, I cannot, and I extend that same regret to the other six firefighters and six police officers in the same situation. Ms. Morelli, as always, thank you for your participation. I don't know if your question was answered, but I'm happy to reach out to you during the week and discuss further and point you in the right direction to our administration, who can give more detailed answers. Mr. Tobia, I like your question, and I understand our council president last year tried to institute some of those additional modes of communication or broadcasting our meetings, and I'm grateful for that. I'm a little confused by the administration's position that it's expensive. I mean, we can do it with an iPad, so I don't understand why we can't just broadcast. I mean, I've done Zoom and broadcasted live on Facebook, and I don't have expensive equipment. So we don't need expensive equipment. We may need an iPad. So, I mean, if it's going to increase public participation, communication, create a more informed public, I think it's something that we should explore. And I think it could be done relatively inexpensively, even if we had to purchase an iPad. And to Ms. Ortiz, I sympathize with you, although tonight hopefully will be a short meeting. I do understand that we can improve our communication and certainly do take your comments to heart. And I think the administration does as well as evidence by some of the comments made earlier. I think I think that's it for me. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Council President. As always, Mr. Fagan, Mr. Puglisi, thank you so much for coming on and sharing information to the public. I did have a question about the water main on Walker Road. As my question just was, if notice was provided to those residents for the repairs that needed to be done. I'm sure it was, but I just wanted to make sure that information was communicated. Mr. Gainer, Mr. Cassidy, thank you so much. Again, in keeping with the fact that this is in litigation, we will refrain from comment at this time. I do want to highlight and bring recognition to the Human Relations Commission, who did host their annual MLK celebration. Although it was virtual this year, it was an absolutely phenomenal program. Three recipients in West Orange were awarded the MLK award for their participation and service to the West Orange community and beyond. Those included Tez Roro, who is a real estate agent, who also is the admin for West Orange, one of our West Orange social media sites, and was very involved with the West Orange Parent Teacher Association. So we want to acknowledge and highlight her service efforts to the community of West Orange. Coach Jackson at West Orange High School, kudos to him and all that he has done. He is a community champion, an athletic champion, as well as a champion for students. So I just want to continue to bring recognition to those who have contributed and were highlighted. In addition to those two persons, we also acknowledge student Barum, who is a senior at West Orange High School, who has been very, very active in the social movement that we are all still experiencing. He has done a wonderful job of making sure the West Orange Police Department is engaged in our community. He has been a champion for social justice in the West Orange High School. And as a student advocate, we just wanted to acknowledge and bring kudos. And as a student advocate, we just wanted to acknowledge and bring kudos and recognition to what he has done as a champion in West Orange and serving our community as well. So again, just bringing kudos to those who have served and were acknowledged during yesterday's one-hour-long program. It is still available for your purview on the West Orange HRC site. So if you just go to our Facebook page in West Orange and put in West Orange Human Relations Commission, you will be able to watch that program. And as the former chair and advocate for diversity, hats off to the Human Relations Commission for a job well done, even as we continue to go through this COVID pandemic. It was just exceptional, and I encourage all of our residents to take an opportunity and, and just indulge in, in the efforts of, of our community residents, those teachers who we have acknowledged, and just the service to our community in honoring MLK. Again, we'll deal with the stop sign resolutions or ordinance that is on deck. Wanted to also speak to Mr. Tobia about attendance. I personally was one of the more than four residents who attended a town council meetings in person when they were available to attend at Town Hall. I do honestly see, this was a question and a request that was put before council members when we first went into a virtual, a virtual arena, was to let people know how many people are actually participating. And I will extend kudos to council, former council president Matute Brown, who did diligently try to make our public aware, because when we are in this webinar forum, you cannot always see how many people are on the call. But I will certainly, as a former participant and attendee of our council meetings, assure you that in our virtual realm, there are much more attendees that were in our Town Hall meetings, except when it was a hot-button item, perhaps something like Rock Spring and us purchasing the property and having to bond that amount of money. So unless it's a hot-button issue for the community, I will again agree that participation, while it may not be great in a community of almost 50,000 residents, what we do have is certainly better than what we had in person. That will complete my comments until further along in the meeting. Thank you so much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. And also just the keynote speaker, President of Bloomfield College at that Human Relations Commission with an impressive resume, and President Evans with her impressive resume and inspirational words.
And I have to, I have to say that she is a member of my sorority, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. So, you know, it was our Founder's Day on January 15th, so I, I, I am certainly pleased that she was our keynote speaker. Thank you, Council President.
Very extensive experience and impressive resume, yes. And anyone that does want to get socially involved, the, just prior to the Human Relations Commission, the Institute for Social Justice also has actionable items on their website. If you go and watch what they did livestream yesterday, there is a lot of information there as well for community engagement, which was highlighted with the honorees at the Human Relations Commission Martin Luther King event. And also Carl Brister was mentioned and highlighted, bringing the community together with music. Nicely done. Okay. There's, there's so many more things, you know, talking about Laura Van Dyke and bringing in Steve Margiotis and Bill Sullivan, just thanking them for all the work that they do also. Jill Fagan and Anthony Puglisi also keeping us all informed. At this time, Madam Clerk, I think this is the time we said we were going to go out of order.
Yes.
If somebody can, can make a motion to, to take ordinance 2675-22 out of order, and then you can pass on that motion and proceed.
I'm going to take the ordinance out of order so we can proceed.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Ordinance 2675-22, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7 Traffic, subsection 7-19 through Streets 7-20 Stop Intersections and 7-21 Multway Stop Intersection of the Revised General Ordinances of West Orange. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
No move.
Second.
Thank you. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
This is the time for the public hearing.
Thank you, Madam, excuse me, Madam Clerk. So everyone that, I'm sorry that we did ask you to wait, and there really is no way that we can tell you when to come on. Our meeting does start at 6:30. We do have a conference agenda, and this, this evening, we did have quite a bit of information from our senior coordinator that took our conference, our first half hour. All the comment does start at 7 o'clock, and as was mentioned, we never know how many comments or how long the remarks will be. Next part of our agenda is to look at our resolutions, any correspondence. So tonight, out of respect to the people that are on, we are moving out of order so that if you do have any comments on this ordinance 2675 about the stops intersections and multi-stop intersections, we welcome to hear your comments now.
Yes, we have several. We can take Lou Picano.
Yes. Hi. Hello, everybody.
Good evening.
New resident, West Orange, just moved in on Old Indian Road. I'll keep it brief. I happen to be the guy right in front of where the stop sign is going to be.
Hi. Excuse me. Can you just state your name and address for the record?
Yeah. Lou Picano, 29, Old Indian. You said this is recorded and then provided on a website somewhere?
Yes, it's on our website, and it's also on YouTube.
The question was about my disclosing my address in West Orange, but okay.
Oh, okay.
That's it. I'll keep it brief. I think it's a great idea. What sort of discussion are you opening up for?
Yeah, any comments or concerns on the stop signs?
Well, I just, I think I'd say it's an extremely good idea. I guess I'd comment that the only thing that's been gotten wrong in the plan is not directly about the stop sign, but that the speed bumps, a very good idea, were put on the downhill side of Old Indian, which is certainly very important, but the acceleration and really the danger posed at that intersection starts up on Prospect Avenue. So people, by the time they get to that intersection at Ridgeway, I, I've seen, I happen to be working at home, I guess a lot of us are right now, and we're frequently seeing people hitting 60 miles an hour across that intersection because they've accelerated all along the top of Old Indian Road. So stop sign, good idea. I think I'd, I'd further throw in, though it doesn't seem to be on the agenda, that the speed bumps ought to be up there higher on Old Indian between Prospect and Ridgefield. Yeah, that's about it. I, I hope you can get people to observe it. It's interesting to me that there's already a very broad white line painted on the ground. Been an awfully long time since I did my driver ed, but that's supposed to be a stop line. And it's kind of amazing that nobody, well, I'd say very few people actually observe the stop line. So hopefully, the stop sign will help.
Thank you, Mr. Picano.
Okay.
Next up is Daniel Keenan. Daniel, state your name and address for the record.
Excuse me one second. Can we get the clock up on the screen, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You really, you don't really need a clock for this because it's, it's a comments on an ordinance, so.
I thought there was a limit on that as well.
I don't, I mean, there may be, but I've never seen it exceeded, and I think people should feel free to talk, you know, as long as it's not a filibuster, as long as they want to on something like this.
I was running the clock. I just forgot to do the share.
Okay, Mr. Keenan.
Mr. Keenan, state your name and address for the record.
Please unmute.
I unmuted. Keys should be ready to go. He needs to unmute himself. Mr. Keenan. Okay, we'll come back to him. Marie DeFalco. State your name and address for the record.
She also is muted. Oh, okay.
Mr. DeFalco, if you can, there we go.
I'm sorry. My name is Marie DeFalco. I, my address is 56 Old Indian Road. I moved in a little more than a year ago. I actually seems like I'm feeling the opposite from everyone else. I would rather not see any more stop signs. I think there's way too many stop signs, especially on that Ridgeway Avenue. It just seems like, I feel like I'm in Manhattan. I'm stopping, you know, at every single block, and it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So I would rather have fewer, fewer stop signs, so I'm opposed. Also, just one other thing, and I'll jump off. Someone mentioned streaming this on Facebook. I mean, I find Zoom very easy because people, including myself, use Zoom at work every day. Most, many people use Zoom at work, whereas Facebook, I've never been on Facebook in my life. I wouldn't know how to access it. So that's it. Thank you.
Next up is Louis Caprario. Louis, state your name and address for the record. You have to unmute.
It just came up. This is Louis Caprario. I'm at 91 Fairview Avenue. I, I believe there are far too many impediments to driving around my neighborhood. I've been a resident here for 48 years, and there have been no problems. Don't see why you're putting up stop signs that, that are unnecessary. It looks like you're searching for a, a problem to solve, and there isn't one. So I, I, I'm very much opposed to this. When I started here, I worked up in Livingston. There were three traffic lights from the St. Cloud area up to South Livingston Avenue. Now there are nine. There are, there are far too many controls, all the speed bumps. You go around, you, you can't get out of our neighborhood without going over some bump somewhere. You know, and the bumps, when they were first put in, you could glide over them at the speed limit. Not a problem. But then they made them taller. They wasn't, they didn't last that way for, for a few moments, for a few days. They made them taller, so when you go over them at the speed limit, it's a jarring experience. So now they are, I can't go downtown St. Cloud Avenue, can't go over to Sheridan. There are law streets I can't drive on anymore because it's too uncomfortable. I'm very much opposed to this, and I wonder whether this meeting has any meeting at, meaning at all since those lines have already been painted on the street without the ordinance being passed. What is that about? Why are the lines there if there's no ordinance to put in a stop sign? So is this a foregone conclusion? Are we just wasting our time here? I, I'm very much upset about that. It looks like, you know, that, that, um, this is, this is just futility here, that you've already made up your mind, and that nothing that anyone says will change it. All right, I've, I've said my piece.
Thank you. Next up is Ms. Ortiz.
Thank you, Council. I am also a new resident to West Orange, a year as of December.
I'm sorry. Can you just state your name and address for the record?
I'm sorry. I knew that, and I'm sorry.
That's okay.
It's Sumara Ortiz, and it's 91 Edgewood Avenue.
Thank you.
So I live, you're welcome. So I live a block away from that hill, that wonderful hill, when you come up off of Northfield. And it is quite a hill. When you come, when you're coming up, you don't really see that it crests in such a way. Children cross right there, but you won't see who's at that crosswalk until you hit the top. I am a lifelong New Yorker. Y-A-W-K-A-H. I know all about speed. I know all about, you know, zooming and cutting corners, the way that folks ride Edgewood Avenue. Speed is the name of the game on Edgewood. And now that you guys have repaved this beautiful Edgewood, it is smooth, and folks take it at 40, 45 miles an hour, and they are not really concerned for the little people who are crossing. I am all for this stop sign because I am concerned for my six-year-old, who is not necessarily going to look both ways when he, in time, is crossing on his own. I am grateful. I am, I am concerned that you don't even have a sign that says children crossing because that's a common, there's a walkway that takes children to St. Cloud, which is the school right there. I don't understand why there isn't a sign that says children crossing. This is a school, this is an elementary school right there, a block away. But that's neither here nor there. I'm here for that sign. There is nothing wrong with there being bumps and signs. This is a residential neighborhood. We're not on 280 yet. It's okay. Thank you so much, Council, and thank you for listening to us complain and moan. Thank you for your good work.
Thank you for turning on that New York accent.
You're welcome. You want some coffee?
Thank you. Next up is Edward Jerry. State your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening. Edward Jerry, 76 Fairview Avenue. Are you able to hear me okay? All right. Thank you very much, Madam President, council members, for having us this evening and for listening to us. As far as I'm concerned, I'll just state my opinion right off the bat that I'm not in favor of the stop signs. I'll mention a couple of things, including the manual and uniform traffic control devices. But to take a step backwards before I get into that, I just wanted to reiterate what someone else had mentioned about the stop lines that were placed. According to the New Jersey Driver's Manual, the white stop lines show where to stop at stop signs or traffic signals. So it doesn't seem to make sense, and there was no information about being able to put in white lines absent a stop sign or traffic signal. And someone who's been in the street for 37 years, I've never encountered such confusion by drive, by drivers because people now in Edgewood seem to be assuming that it's an always stop when it currently isn't an always stop. So before the stop signs are put in, I would just make the recommendation to have someone either put in the stop sign quickly if it is approved, or if not, get rid of those lines rather quickly because it seems to be causing a hazard. As far as the stop signs go, I'll be referencing just the Fairview Avenue and Edgewood Avenues, and then the Old Indian and Ridgeway Avenues, as they're the ones that I drive on. According to the manual on uniform traffic control devices, the MUTCD, stop signs should be installed in a manner that minimizes the number of vehicles having to stop. And in most cases, the street carrying the lowest volume of traffic should be stopped. This is already the case on Edgewood Avenue and Ridgeway Avenues, which has the lower volume. And the stop sign should only be installed on the major streets. So in this case, Old Indian Roads or Fairway Avenue, when it's justified by a traffic engineering study. So I'm assuming that the Mr. Lepore had conducted a study. I'm not sure what the rationale was. Maybe someone could provide that rationale for what the reason are, reasons are for the stop signs. Several members of the community have already expressed speed as a concern. However, the MUTCD, along with other meta-analyses of multi-way stops, won by W. Martin Rutherford Jr., states emphatically, and in section 2B.07, "Multi-way stop app..." "Multi-way stop applications of the MUTCD, stop signs should not be used for speed control." This is corroborated by a number of studies. And what happens is when misapplied, all stops create, always stops rather like, that are suggested, create more problems than a traditional two-way stop, and this is what the research indicates, one that I just mentioned. And among those issues is that people believe that the new stop signs are unwarranted and speed up in between the stop signs, as is the case, let's say, on Ridgeway Avenue, four tenths of a mile roadway that has three always stops, or will have three always stops if the Old Indian one is put in place. But as far as the engineering study goes, I would be curious to hear what the study showed, including crash experience on the roadway, volume for the roadway, and in sight distance. Because if sight distance, let's say, Fairview Avenue and Edgewood Avenue is a concern, it's a 300-foot span from Edgewood Avenue to Birchwood Avenue, for example, which is clear sight. It's equally as clear up Fairview Avenue. So I'm not sure why, what the sight issue is. And again, if it's a speeding issue, the guidance from the Department of Transportation says it's not for speed control at all for always stops. And again, stop signs should be installed in a manner that minimizes the number of vehicles having to stop, which is evidenced in certain areas in the neighborhood, such as Edgewood and Westview, which has no yield sign or stop sign, or Highland Boulevard and Fairview Avenue, which has a yield sign on Highland only, which is also an intersection. Or, for example, Gavin Avenue in Waddington, which has a yield sign at the intersection. So why are these putting, you know, being put in here? As far as the engineering study, again, like I said, the MUTCD indicates three criteria. So if there's five or more reported crashes in a 12-month period, that would potentially validate, you know, a reason why. And then the minimum volume state that there needs to be an average of at least 300 vehicles per hour for any eight hours of an average day. And I don't think that this meets requirements, but again, I didn't do the study. So I'd just like to hear on that, hear about that a little bit. So in some, I think that there is currently a potential negligence or liability issue for the township with these white lines put in place, which I think there should be something to do about. And then for the stop signs, like I said, for those points mentioned, a speeding issue says emphatically, stop signs shouldn't be used. And this is again by the federal document. So again, thank you for listening. I appreciate your time, and thank you for the work that you do for the country.
Thank you, Mr. Jerry, for the research that you've done.
Next up, we have Rachel. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Rachel Cohen, and I live at 55 Fairview Avenue, which is literally at the intersection of Fairview and Edgewood. And thanks for this opportunity, first of all, to comment. I think anybody in this neighborhood who has young children or who walks regularly understands exactly why we need a four-way stop, both at the corner of Fairview and Edgewood, and the corner of Edgewood and Rock Spring. I would also add that I'm totally in favor of the three-way stop at Ridgway Avenue and Old Indian. I didn't know that was on the agenda. It's, it's, it may or may not be the case that stop signs have a purpose other than to slow people down or to control traffic speed. But I can tell you for sure that for those of us that walk around the neighborhood, that have young children, especially those who are walking their children to school, as the previous caller indicated in the earlier session, the speed at which people are traveling on these streets is unbelievable for a residential neighborhood. And there was at our corner some kind of survey device put up that obviously led to the decision to move on this, which must have warranted the lines being painted and further, you know, movement of the discussion around putting up the actual stop signs. It's definitely the case that when there's traffic on Northfield Ways, the GPS traffic app sends people via Fairview up the hill and through the neighborhood. I believe they probably do that on Ridgway as well. And we've experienced this ourselves. So it's becoming a kind of thoroughfare in the neighborhood, which is not the intention in such a residential area. So I think for the safety, especially of our youngest kiddos, for the safety of elderly and other walking folks in the neighborhood, there's absolutely no doubt that we need four-way stops, at least at the two intersections that I believe this ordinance was talking about. And also, I would add, on Old Indian Road, there's no reason for people to be speeding through this neighborhood in the way that they do. It's terribly unsafe, extremely dangerous. And we really, really welcome those of us who live here the chance to calm things down around for the benefit of the whole community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cohen.
Next up, we have Alexandra Byun. Alexandra, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Alexandra Byun, and I live on 37 Old Indian. I just moved here approximately four months ago onto this road. I actually used to live across town by the high school. So, and thank you for the council for listening to me. On this road, I'm just curious as to why this, and I'm talking very specifically about the intersection between Old Indian and Ridgway. I'm not familiar with the other roads as much. But for this intersection, I'm curious as to why there is now talk and consideration about putting a stop sign there on this road. In recent months, I believe about approximately a month or two ago, they just put in speed bumps on this road, and there's a number. And so what it would lead to, if you're heading toward Prospect, is the speed bump and then the immediate stop sign. I'm coming the other way. You would be coming off of Prospect. You would hit the stop sign. You would hit a speed bump. You'd go a little way, and then a speed bump. And so it seems to me that there's a lot of work being done in this area. I'm, I believe the stops are maybe a bit of a redundancy. I have seen speeding happen on this road, and I have seen it slowed down a bit with the speed bumps. Then Mr. Regieri made a comment about conflicts. The other thing I have seen with the drawing of the lines is, as he said, it has caused confusion. And as I'm coming down the road, I have seen people stop, and I have seen people speed through. The incidence with, because people don't know what to do, I do believe that is a concern because I believe it's going to cause an accident. Because if a person is coming to this line, and they're thinking there's a stop sign, and they stop, but another person behind it does not see a stop sign, and they continue to go, you may have an incident where one person is stopping, and the person behind is not stopping. And so that causes a little bit of concern for me. So those are my two issues. Why is it being put in? I understand this speed issue, but in light of the speed bumps, why is this being put in? And secondly, I absolutely agree with some of the other commentators. The issue with the line has to be addressed. If you, if this council believes a stop sign has to be put in, it has to be done sooner than later. And if not, then those lines have to be taken off. It is creating confusion. I've seen it as I'm driving behind other people. Thank you. Those are my comments.
Thank you very much.
Next up is Olivia Tosi. Olivia, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Hi, my name is Olivia Tachi. I live at 106 Edgewood Avenue. So my address is 106 Edgewood Avenue, but my driveway is on Rock Spring. And I have, I live on that corner where that dangerous intersection is that everyone is speaking of, where there is a terrible blind spot. And that terrible blind spot is where I watch children every day cross to get to the walking path to St. Cloud Elementary. Twice now, in the two years that I have lived in this wonderful, wonderful neighborhood, which I walk almost every day, because guess what? I work from home. Twice, I have almost been hit backing out of my driveway with my two children in the car. I have come to a full stop at the bottom of my driveway, looked both ways, and have proceeded. You cannot see me backing out of my driveway because of this blind spot. And I cannot see you coming from Rock Spring towards Northfield because of this blind spot. It is crucial, crucial, crucial for the safety of the children of this neighborhood that Rock Spring and Edgewood has an always stop sign. That is all I'm going to say. I cannot speak to the other intersections. I've walked with my children in strollers in them and around, but I do not know what the traffic patterns are there. But I truly hope that the council will please consider the one that is where a designated crosswalk is for the elementary school as absolutely critical to install an always stop sign immediately. Thank you all so much for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Great. Next up is Beth Wallish. Beth Wallish, if you can state your name and address for the record. You're muted.
Hello?
Yes. State your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Beth Wallach, 19 Edgewood Avenue North. And we are at the end of Edgewood and the corner of Old Indian. Our house fronts Edgewood, but our driveway is on Old Indian. And it's the, going from Prospect to Edgewood, it is a total cut through for the neighborhood, you know. And we're also new residents. We've been here a few months, also from New York. And I didn't realize, I thought we were buying, you know, a house in a really quiet area. I'm not saying it's like super, super busy, but I have noticed what a cut through Old Indian is to get down to Pleasant Valley, to, you know, to get to just different points, to Livingston and whatever. So, and as far as Edgewood itself, I agree with some of the callers who say the traffic, I can, I'm sometimes shocked at the speed that people are going on Edgewood. And we have a young grandson who comes to visit often. We go out walking with him, and even when they see us in the street with a one-year-old, they don't even slow down. So I think a stop sign is imperative at the corner of Fairview. I'm less familiar with the Ridgway corner, but anything, as far as I'm concerned, anything that slows the traffic down in this particular area is welcome. I just think it's for everybody's safety. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wall.
Next up, we have Karen Jones. Karen, please state your name and address for the record.
My address is 7 Edgewood Avenue North. Karen Jones. I just want to say I'm in agreement with the comments that were made regarding the stop signs that could possibly be placed at the intersection of Fairview and Edgewood Ave, and also Rock Springs and Edgewood Ave. My husband and I have a son. He's 18 now, but when he was smaller, we've been living here since August of 1999. And when our son was little, we would walk to St. Cloud. And that is a very dangerous area at Rock Springs and Edgewood Ave. Even as an adult driving, when you get to that stop sign at Edgewood, I have been prepared to make a left to connect to Northfield. And, you know, I wouldn't see a car, and then right at turning, all of a sudden, a car would fly up from the right on Rock Springs. And because of the deep incline that they have there, and you can't really see a car until they reach a certain level to the peak. So it definitely needs to have additional stop signs at that intersection. And also, after hearing the comments about the intersection of Fairview and Edgewood, there is a need for stop signs because also, driving on Edgewood, you reach that stop sign on Edgewood. But I've also have seen cars then, after making a stop, and you don't see any cars coming on Fairview, but all of a sudden, to the left, cars that would be headed east on Fairview would come flying up. Also, that has a steep incline, and you don't see that until they come to the top. And depending on how fast they're going, that can also be a cause for an accident. So I am in agreement with that. I'm not going to say too much. I am familiar with the intersection of Ridgway and Old Indian. I'm glad that they are speed bumps because people are using that to connect to, continue on Old Indian, a lot of times to Pleasant Valley Way. And, you know, people are going fast. Well, I am happy to see the speed bumps there. And I'll just leave it to council and in consideration of the other comments of the people who actually lives on Ridgway as to whether or not a stop sign should be placed. But since we're talking about stop signs and the streets, I do have a comment maybe for further consideration in the future is that it's nice that they repaved Old Indian as you continue from on to Old Indian, and you make that right, that could connect you eventually to Pleasant Valley Way. But right where it ends at Waddington, I've noticed that if I'm driving on Old Indian, that, and you're coming up Old Indian, let's say, from Pleasant Valley Way, and you're coming up Old Indian, and right where you reach where they stopped, the repaving where Waddington intersects, that there's a curve, like a snake-like curve. And it's difficult to see any oncoming traffic because of that curve. And there's an issue because of, especially in the spring and summer, when a lot of that vegetation on the left, where the golf course is, as that grows, that causes a blockage on the left-hand side. So it inhibits you seeing the road in its entirety. So unless, I don't know, if mirrors could be placed, or just one of those signs that shows you that there is this snake-like curve, and for people to slow down, that would also be very beneficial, I think, in avoiding a possible accident at that spot. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Ms. Jones.
Next up is Andre. Andre, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, it's actually Ingrid Schellig, his wife. He's utilizing his computer, so sorry about that. So Ingrid Schellig here. I reside at 34 Rock Spring Avenue. So literally down the block from the stop sign that's being requested. Both my husband and myself are agreeing with the actual stop sign that's being requested. We have a two-year-old, of which we walk on the weekends, and we also drive her to the Goddard School over on Prospect. And just from experience of being here, we've been residing here for four years now. The speed that's taken when the drivers are coming off of Northfield is, could be anywhere from 35 to up to 50. And I see it and hear it every single night because I'm on Rock Spring Avenue. So people are literally flying down, even some of the residents from down, from down the block, also as well as flying, which I also want to request to put in speed bumps on Rock Spring Avenue because this is a block where now new residents are, as well as myself, are coming in with children, and children are playing outside, and the cars are just speeding down. Also, agreed with the Old Indian and Ridgway Avenue stop sign as well. I understand the speed bumps were just put in there as well, but they're still not doing anything in comparison to a stop sign. Because once you pass those speed bumps, people are still flying by. And this is my daily drive, driving my toddler, because I also work from home. I drive my toddler every day to school. And I myself am like, making hand gestures to the drivers, like, slow down just because there's pedestrians, walking their dog, and or even in the evening because there's not enough lighting, people are, you know, still walking. because there's not enough lighting, people are, you know, still walking their dogs or even taking a walk. So definitely up for the stop signs that are being requested. And thank you again for taking the time as to letting us speak as residents and relating our concern.
Thank you, Ms. Wallach.
Next up is Frances. Frances, please state your name and address for the record. Frances, you need to unmute. We'll give you a couple more seconds. We can come back to you. All right, Frances, we're going to come back to you. We'll go to Scott Ackerman.
Hello?
Hi, Scott.
Hi.
State your name and address again for the record.
This is Scott Ackerman, 88 Edgewood Avenue. And since I made my comments earlier, you suggested that I get on the record at the right time. So I want to be on the record as in favor of the resolution. And you, in the interest of time, you can refer to my earlier comments if that's okay.
So the comments that you made before, we got you were in favor of the ordinance.
Correct.
Okay.
Want to make sure I'm on the record with my comments.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next up is Jaime Cohen. Jaime, if you could state your name and address for the record. You are muted. Jaime Cohen, last call. Okay, we'll come back to you two at the, at the end. Deborah Marquette.
Hi, I'm actually Laura Kramer. That Deborah Marquette is my spouse. I live at 18 Edgewood. I've lived here for 36 years. It's on the corner of Lessing Road. Yes, Bill used to be my neighbor. I walk daily. I have a dog. I walk the entire neighborhood twice daily around all the, where all the stop signs are. I've lived here so long that I remember when we didn't have curbs on Edgewood Avenue. And I walk in all kinds of weather, in ice and snow. And I want to point out that Edgewood Avenue has no sidewalks for most of Edgewood Avenue. And I feel like when I walk my dog, I take my life in my hands because people's speed on Edgewood Avenue. We also walk on Old Indian Road, and there are no sidewalks on that. And it's so dangerous. We have no sidewalks, no crosswalks, which could also slow people down. Because we cross at that intersection at Old Indian Road and Ridgway, Ridgway Avenue all the time. And it is so difficult to get across that. There are several times in, when, when we have had snow on the road, we've had to get up onto the snow mounds for our own safety and to protect our dogs. So I am strongly in favor for of all of the stop signs. And I appreciate you hearing me and thank you for all you do.
Thank you for speaking out.
We're going to go back to Frances. Frances, name and address for the record.
Frances Green, 21 Edgewood Ave. So we live one house away from the corner of Edgewood and Fairview. And it's, it's a dangerous intersection, even with the one-stop sign. And it's not only dangerous for the walkers, it's also dangerous for the drivers. Because cars come racing up and down Fairview. So, I mean, you look and then, and then the next thing you know, there's a car speeding down the street. And it, it's just nerve-wracking and unsafe. And I want to echo the previous caller in the fact that this neighborhood does lack adequate sidewalks. I have a young daughter and, and it's nerve-wracking. We, it's sad that we can't just walk down Edgewood because there are no driveways and there are people, or sidewalks, and there are people that come racing down the street from all directions. And I think this is, and I have to agree too with, I actually support all three stop signs. Because this, this neighborhood is a cut through, and we need to discourage people from cutting through, and we need to make it what it's for. It's for the people who live here, who want to walk about their neighborhood, who want to take their kids on their bikes and walk down the street and not feel scared and nervous and seeing these other, you know, non-residents speed, speed down our streets. So that's all. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Frances, for your comments.
Charles Michalat.
Hi, Charles Michalat. We live at 1 Ridgway Avenue. We are right on the corner of Ridgway and Old Indian. I just wanted to speak in favor of the speed bumps and the stop signs. I do think that getting stop signs in there as quickly as possible is important because there is a dangerous ambiguity of people not knowing exactly what to do at those lines. But I have to say that the line already is providing a good guide for people who are coming down from Prospect and making the left turn on to Ridgway, because usually they, they would cut that corner very tightly, which makes it difficult for pedestrians and for cars that are turning from Ridgway to Old Indian. So I, that's, that's my point. Like, say, big thumbs up, and the sooner the better. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Michalat.
Great. Evan Wallach, you're up next. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, I, okay, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, Evan Wallach, also 19 Edgewood Avenue North. My wife, Beth spoke earlier. Just wanted to also reiterate for the record by support for the placement of the stop signs in the area. As my wife said, we're new residents to, to West Orange, been here a few months. And just have noticed that there is definitely a traffic going down Old Indian as a cut through. The speed bumps that were put there recently have helped. But we think that the stop signs would be an additional safety. So just want to register my support.
Thank you, Mr. Wallach. And I'm glad that you were in agreement with your wife. We've heard otherwise on occasions.
I'm sorry. Next up is Roland. State your name and address for the record.
Hi, this is actually his wife. I'm Uma Avilas. 11 Rock Spring Avenue. And I wanted to speak in support of all three stop signs. I'll speak particularly to the one at the intersection of Edgewood and Rock Spring Avenue. We live a little bit down Rock Springs. You have to come up that hill to leave our neighborhood and our home. Often, I will be coming up that hill and sticking to the right where I'm supposed to be. But cars have come up from Northfield so fast and fly over that hill and like almost miss which side of the street they should be on because of how, like, it goes both up and around all at the same time. And so I will say, I have noticed an improvement even just with the lines, because it seems to keep people where they need to be. I am all in favor of a stop sign there. We've lived here seven years. And my first reaction when we moved in was I can't believe there isn't a stop sign here.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go back to Jaime Cohen.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. It's Jamie Cohen, C O H E N. And I wanted to state that I am for, absolutely for the stop signs and any speed bumps. I wanted to reiterate that we do not have adequate sidewalks in this neighborhood. And I don't know why we wouldn't prioritize the safety of our community. I think that the stop signs, I don't know why they would be a hindrance to anyone. We have several children and families in this neighborhood. And the priority of their safety should be top of mind. I also just want to point out, I'm at 32 Fairview Avenue, and we are up late and see in our front window cars speeding by at a very intense speed, all the way up to 2:00 in the morning at times. And it's just, you hear them whizzing by. It's, it's not safe, and we're not comfortable with the speed at which people are flying by. So we are for, all of us in our family are for the stop signs and appreciate the time that you've given us to share that. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Jamie Cohen.
Okay, any other members of the public like to speak? Please raise your hand. I'm not seeing anyone else. All right, I think, I think you're good to go, Council President.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So at our last council meeting, I did ask our township engineer, when this was introduced on first reading, how this surfaced, this actual ordinance. And it was prompted by residents in your area. And we can hear now the support of this. My understanding is that a survey is sent out to the residents in the area that would be directly affected by this. And if 75% of the responses are received in favor, then the town engineer moves forward. I am very happy to see that our town engineer has been able to join us. And Lenny, I'm sure that you've heard quite a bit of this comments. There are a couple of questions that we have concerning the white lines that were brought up without the stop sign and the signal. If you care to, some of the residents, one of the residents who opposed this was saying that it seemed like a done deal. And I wanted to let all the residents know that the council did receive correspondence from the town engineer. And he is requesting that this be approved, the multi-way stop intersections pursuant to the state statute 394-8B, based on, due to the volume of traffic through these intersections, turning movements at each intersection and limited sight distance, which we heard this evening, of traffic through these intersections, turning movements at each intersection and limited sight distance at various approaches at each intersection. The Township's Engineering Division determined that traffic needed to be regulated on all approaches to these intersections for the safe movement of traffic through them. Currently, the intersections are regulated by stop signs there, but they are not multi-way stop intersections. This is the council appreciates anything that the engineer gives us. And I'm glad that he's here. He can explain his reasoning. But I certainly appreciate the fact that so many residents did come out to express their concerns and their support of this. Lenny, if you could join us, please.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. I'm only available by audio tonight. But as I said in, in the letter that was issued earlier this month, or actually late last year, the predominant reason for designating these as a multi-way stop intersection with stop signs on all the approaches was due to limited sight distance and, and the turning movements at them. There are criteria for establishing stop intersections. There are criteria for establishing multi-way stop intersections. Very often, multi-way stop intersections has very specific criteria pertaining to volume. The volumes aren't met at this intersection. Probably most intersections in town would never meet the volume criteria. But they do allow other engineering reasons based upon studies to designate an intersection for, as a multi-way stop with stop signs on all approaches. And it's those other criteria here with respect to the limited sight distance at these intersections, and the turning movements being made in the presence of limited sight distance, that I requested that these be, all three be designated multi-way stops with stop signs on all approaches. Now, I did hear about the stop signs, or not the stop signs, the painting. Took the opportunity when we just repaved some of the streets late last year to put those markings in. I was a bit presumptuous based on some conversations with people in the neighborhood. But I could, if this does not go through, they can easily be milled out of, from the pavement. So if this gets approved tonight, the plan is to have flashing LED stop signs put at all the approaches where there are no stop signs. Those are due shortly. And as soon as they come in, subject to your approval of this ordinance, those signs will be posted.
Thank you, Lenny. Would anyone, any of my council colleagues care to comment? Yes, Councilwoman Castelina.
I raised my hand.
I saw Councilwoman Castelina's hand first. No?
It's, it's okay if you want to go first. I thought we were going to go.
I didn't see your, your hand up. Sorry. It's not Councilwoman Rutherford's hand.
Thanks. Ms. Lepore with the mulch, with the LED lights. I'm glad to hear that every, so many came on. I was, you know, looking at the addresses on Google Maps as the callers were calling in to see how close they were to the stop signs because I am concerned about the, the lights flashing. I don't have the, your letter, you sent them, but that was, I guess, all the folks that came on know that there's going to be that light there, not just the stop sign, but that it's going to be lit as well, correct?
The, the stop sign will have red lights around its perimeter at, at its corners. It's an octagon. So there's eight LED flashing lights. These are solar powered. There's no electrical connection. But also, they are speed activated. So only when a car is approaching, will those, will those red light.
It's not like you'll be sitting in your living room and you'll see this light flashing all night long. Okay. That's one thing I just wanted you to clear, clear up. And then two, I know my concern, last year, we had a snowstorm. This year on Walker Road, you know, I'm always worried about, you know, you need that little momentum to go up the hill. Unfortunately, they're utilizing that momentum when it's not snowing and speeding up these hills. But, you know, I just concerned about the, the incline going up the hill and having a stop sign right there. Have we had any issues on Walker Road this year? Has that been all right since we initiated that stop sign?
It, it's, it is a concern, and I appreciate the concern. I'm the director of the department that is responsible, as you know, for making sure that those streets are clear. I try to look at the big picture, that there's probably maybe in a bad winter, maybe approximately 20 storms a year versus 340 other days when, when their snow is not an issue. So while I'm not saying it is a bit of a concern during snow, I try to balance that over how many, many, many more days there are when these will be effective when there is no snow.
All right. And I want to thank you for the residents on the call. I really appreciate all you coming on this evening. It was great to hear everyone and how it would affect them. And for the folks that even aren't for it and, and why, you know, Mr. Lepore does much due diligence working with them for the past five years or so. I've seen that. He really takes his time and, and does his homework. It's unfortunate that, you know, we have to, you know, you know, have four of these, this, this, you know, in a beautiful residential neighborhood. But, you know, in the today's world with ways and these GPSs and rerouting traffic through beautiful neighborhoods, this is what we're seeing. I, on my street, I have all sorts of trap, stop signs and, and speed bumps. And it's dangerous. And I could hear the fear and the, the parents' voices and the walkers as well. So thank you, folks, for everyone coming on. The information is so important and very grateful. So thank you, folks, for everyone coming on. The information is so important and very grateful to hear from all of you. Thank you, Council President.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Thank you, Council President. I want to echo the sentiments that Councilwoman Castellino just shared. I was gonna share the same with respect to the work that's done in advance. And just to reassure, since particularly, we have so many new residents in town. First off, welcome. Thank you for joining our council meetings and I hope that you're able to join us more often. But there is, there is a need, I think, for those, particularly in the blind spot areas in a school zone area. If I were in that area, I would be very concerned about the speed which I have witnessed myself. When Old Indian Road was paved, I know a lot of the residents on Old Indian Road were not happy because they knew that people would just, you know, with a smooth road, they'd make sure it was a cut through because it's now easier to navigate and we've seen that. Unfortunately, that is a result, but there was some work that had to be done on Old Indian Road. But I just want to assure, I was looking for the resident who said that, you know, this is already a done deal. I would like to just clarify that the council does have these hearings with ordinance, when it comes to second reading of the ordinances that, so that we can discuss these issues and have questions because you bring some perspective to our discussions that we may not have because we may not reside in in the areas that we are looking at. But looking at the Google Maps and Google Earth and seeing the blind spots and the proximities to the schools, I think that our, our first concern has to be not the annoyance of having to drive over, and I hate to say that because my husband hates speed bumps, and then there's a stoplight or a traffic light or a stop sign. But safety is the concern here. And most of our, I'm on Coral Circle and I don't have any sidewalks, so we are walking. And there is a blind spot when you're coming up the hill that I live on and sometimes unfortunately, living in it in a dead end, you figured it's just the residents who are on the circle that live here shouldn't be speeding, but unfortunately, that's the case. We're all in a hurry. Guilty sometimes of that too. So I think that this is what what our township engineer has done is look at the safety and all of the concerns that's around that. So please don't think that we have made up our minds before we come. But certainly do appreciate everyone's considerations and communications to the council. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Councilman Rutherford?
Thank you, Council President. So I am encouraged by the robust discussion tonight. Thank you to all the residents that have come out and expressed their support or their lack of support for these. I am very familiar with the Edgewood stop signs that are proposed, having lived there for a number of years. And certainly that street does require some assistance in managing both the speed and the safety of pedestrians along the sides because there are no sidewalks. So I am in agreement with all of those that have supported those stop signs. I do have a question, though, with regard to the stop sign that is proposed at the corner of Old Indian and Ridgeway. Have we considered putting speed bumps between Ridgeway and Prospect? Was that part of the consideration be, before we got to this point? Mr. Jerry brought up a very good point. You know, he's not supportive of the stop sign at all. I can't recall if he's supportive of the speed bumps or not. But they aren't above, they aren't between Ridgeway and Prospect. And I'm curious as to what the thought process was around that. Mr. Lapore, can you address that for me?
Sure, Councilman Rutherford. You'll notice not only aren't there any speed tables or speed humps on that section of Old Indian from Prospect to Ridgeway, there aren't any on Ridgeway Avenue either. Long ago, a decision was made that due to the presence of Firehouse Three and that being a main emergency response route, both Ridgeway Avenue and that block of Old Indian, that it was my decision not to restrict their response by having speed tables on either Ridgeway Avenue or Old Indian Road. And again, Firehouse Three is is on Ridgeway Avenue, near Northfield Avenue. However, when we looked at that, we did find that we could place some always stops on Ridgeway Avenue because of the proximity to the school at St. Joseph's. So that's, that's the predominant reason why we never went back and installed speed tables on that other section of Old Indian Road and and that, or Ridgeway Avenue.
Mr. Lapore, as usual, you have been thoughtful in in making these decisions. That makes perfect sense to me. Thank you for expressing that tonight. And wanted to say also on the point about painting first, you know, this is one of those moments where while it may not have, the the painting of the line may not have come after we have taken a vote on this and Mr. Lapore has admitted that it was a little presumptuous. I think that's one of those kinds of things that is done for efficiency without any malice or any malintent. Certainly, as Mr. Lapore has said, and I want to reiterate this to the callers that, or the participants that have expressed some concern. If if it was voted down, Mr. Lapore would have been happy to remove those lines expeditiously and we would expect him to do so. But to have, to do work at the time in such a close proximity to when this is proposed, I can understand why he would make that step. I think that's it for me. And again, I want to thank all of the commenters, especially Laura, my former neighbor. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you for your questions and Lenny, thank you for your explanations and your reasoning to help us all. And all the residents that have come out to help us all have a better understanding.
Council President, I just want to point out there is a member of the public that has his hand raised.
On this issue? Yes?
Yes.
I believe that that person already spoke.
He already spoke, but his hand has been raised. Just wanted to point it out.
Yes, please.
Okay, you'll let, you'll, you'll allow him to speak? Sure. Okay. Lou Picano?
This is he. Yeah, I'm listening to this. It's great interest. Just want to mention again that I happen to be exactly the guy at that intersection of Old Indian and Ridgeway. To clarify an earlier note, no, the letter does not mention an LED flashing light. Someone made the spot-on comment that flashing LEDs might be flashing in someone's living room. I think that was Councilwoman Castellino, if I'm not mistaken. Yes, those lights would be flashing, guess where, directly into my living room. So as a big fan of LEDs in general, I, you know, I see the need for them. I want people to see that light. So I think I would just say to that, maybe there is a design consideration the engineering could look at to make those lights just sort of directly visible to the people coming down Old Indian. That way, just something to make it a little more, a little less visible into our house, but visible to the people racing down that street. And of course, just to reiterate, I'm otherwise fully in support of the idea of a stop sign. So I'm not changing that at all. But there is the factor that these signs are literally right in our front yard. I understand the need for them. I was also going to comment on the speed bumps that are, to us, the critical part. I now understand that the stretch between Prospect and Ridgeway is not speed bumped for the fire department. I heard that bit of the discussion, but that really is where the acceleration first happens. A few people have said they see the traffic going by. We're literally like the auditing committee for the traffic that goes around that corner. And the speed is picked up from Prospect down to Ridgeway. Sometimes with no stop at all, Ridgeway becomes a racetrack, especially late at night. So that's all I'd say about it. I guess I was gonna lobby for speed bumps on the uphill side, but I now understand we're not gonna get that. So I would just ask that maybe engineering does something to mask off or make those LEDs as directional as possible so they, you know, present as as little of a I'll call it an obstruction, you know, into our, literally into our living room. I think that can be done. That's it. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. New resident, West Orange, so thanks for the time to talk to you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Okay. Any other comments? No. We're going to put this to a vote.
Is there a motion to approve twenty-six seventy-five dash twenty-two?
Some seconds.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes. And thank you all. Thank you.
Council President? I apologize. I apologize. I want to raise my hand before we vote it. It has nothing to do with the vote, though, but while I'm Mr. Lapore on and still have all the callers, could he just go over very quickly, because there's a lot of questions about sidewalks? The process for that and whose responsibility the sidewalks are.
Thank you. Took the words right out of my mouth. Thank you, Councilwoman Castellino. Then particularly because we have adopted a complete streets policy soon to be hopefully an ordinance, can, what do we do about sidewalks?
Well, I I think probably the first thing is if if there's a neighborhood request or a need, and then we should hear from that neighborhood. And because I think that's usually the hardest part. I think if we were to get the support and if it's physically able to be, if they're physically able to be installed, then I think the next step that we discuss is who pays for it. But I think it's really making sure that the neighborhood sees a need and that they're in support of having sidewalks.
So would that require another survey to go out to all the residents again?
I I think, I'm not sure what streets in particular tonight. I'm sure there's vast sections of Edgewood Avenue. Also sections of Old Indian Road, although some of these become a little bit harder physically to install them, but I think those were some of the streets that that I heard. I think Rock Spring Avenue, at least for a good portion of one side, has walks on, I think, on, on, on it. So I, again, I think it's, it's, those are probably the main streets in this, in this upper Saint Cloud area that could be considered.
Okay, yes, invisible on Google Maps as well. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you all, yeah. So we did go out of order. We need to go back to our consent agenda for the resolutions that are on our agenda this evening. And does anyone have any questions or? Any resolutions?
I have to review other, the other part of the consent agenda.
Okay.
Approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting, January fourth, twenty-twenty-two. Report of Township Officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids. Correspondence from Dr. Robert Bagoff, Chairman of the Planning Board regarding proposed amendment to land use regulations, Chapter twenty-five, authorizing and encouraging electric vehicle supply slash service equipment and make-ready parking spaces.
So I was going to talk about this as planning board when we did our council liaison announcements. The letter from Dr. Bagoff does in fact say that the ordinance that we have on our agenda this evening is consistent with our master plan, particularly with our sustainable element that was added back in two thousand nineteen. And it is also consistent with the Senate Bill and state statute that is also encouraging electric charging stations throughout the state.
Council President, I had a question. I can save it to the ordinance reading now. I'll wait till the ordinance reading.
Is there a consent on that? Bills, none. Resolutions or any resolutions being pulled this evening? No?
Is everyone saying no? I wanted to say thank you to the legal department, Mr. Trank and and also the engineer for the resolution fourteen dash twenty-two. That was the one I, just their prompt response, having CME Engineering Firm look at our steep slope ordinance. This resolution is to approve there, those services for the engineering services that would be required to make the amendment to our ordinance. So it was a very conference call and I'm just pleased at the prompt response from the legal department.
Council President, I'm not gonna pull any, but I did have a couple of questions on two resolutions. Thank you. Actually, well, since you just mentioned Resolution fourteen twenty-two, just had a question with respect to the, and I know this is, there's still another meeting that's gonna come up in February with CME to take a deeper dive on the strengthening of the ordinance for our steep slopes. But I wondered if we are also looking at in the ordinance, and this will go back to Councilwoman Castellino, forever ingrained in my, in my brain for the first, from my first year, who's gonna provide the accountability, the oversight, enforcement? And are we going to consider penalties for those who do not abide by the maintenance plan that they are supposed to provide? So where is this going to live? I know that they will be required to have a geotech do a survey and create a plan for maintenance and other minimum criterias for the scope of analysis. But is CME just going out, now this is a question for Mr. Gross. Is CME just going to do the analysis on this deep slope? Or are we going to have a situation like we, or could we consider if we're not considering it yet, have a situation like we have with Mr. DeFeo where we receive reports after his analysis of the recycling center? Obviously, not looking for that type of a monthly report, but am concerned because, you know, Town Hall being what it is and staff and and Mr. Lapore being, you know, really, really stretched thin and all of the work that he has to do. Just wondering who is going to be accountable to ensure that we are providing oversight and accountability?
The, what you're being asked to approve now is to actually look at our codes to make sure that our codes are in line and and where they need to be. What you're talking about is is either part of another application process, of which case those professionals then would have to review any such plan that came through in an application as they would with any other, through escrow, through the escrows, as they would with any other aspect of a plan. After the plan, that may be quite a bit different. Now you're talking about enforcement and then we would have to look at and see what process we could put in place to fund that. That would all, that would be on the township's dime that would not be able to be enforced unless there was an ongoing application. But 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 in situations where just the the steep slopes exist and if you're looking for certain enforcement in those areas, there'd be no, no escrow escrow to to fall back on for enforcement. So we'd have to look at that and see how that might play out. Certainly, anything that went through a planning board approval process could, something similar could be set up as a condition. could, something similar could be set up as a condition, uh, of approval.
Yeah, I, I certainly thank you for that, Mr. Gross. Certainly, um, considered that obviously there has to be, um, approval through the planning department that, that would be the first step, but again, um, and I don't know if the Chair of the Planning Board has the, um, the experience or the expertise to look at a, a plan, a geotechnical plan and say this doesn't meet all the criteria, so I, I'm really grateful for the CME, um, to come in and, and review our ordinance. I think that it's a step, certainly a step in the right direction. I'm just thinking when I read it, you know, what, what are our next steps for that accountability as well?
The, the expertise of the, the Planning Board Chairman aside, and, and, um, it, it, as a matter of process, you would, in, in that circumstance, that you'd want the staff professional, whether it be CME or whomever, to do that review when it came in, and that would be paid for out of the escrow.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Um, be, having been on the call, uh, this is approving the professional services for CME to move ahead with the amendments to our ordinance. And in the letter that was received from CME talking about what they would address, that was an excellent question and one of the ones that did come up during that conference call. Uh, what they are in the number three of the letter from CME, they're stating that the ordinance will stipulate that there will be a maintenance plan. And there was discussion on how often that needs to be reviewed by a licensed engineer qualified to do that geotechnical uh, engineering work. So I don't know that that's been determined yet, uh, in that timeframe, but that was definitely part of the discussion.
Yeah, I think, thank you, Council President. I did read and underline all those, but again, on the, on the part of the township is what I'm asking, um, as to going to, where's that going to live? Where does it have? Um, but look forward to the next discussion. Um, and then just, um, another question on resolution twelve twenty-two. It's, it's just out of curiosity. It's the, um, Harvey Management Court, um, developer of Burger King and PVW, um, for some ex, export funds that have been, um, are being released, um, for some off-premises work. What is off-premises work, um, that was done, if you know?
That usually something like that is infrastructure. This is likely sidewalks and curbs.
Okay.
That are, 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 you know, tangent to the, the improvements that they've, they made and had made application for a year or so.
They've been doing a lot of work there.
So, um, what I understand is that, if you recall when Burger King did all of the work that they were doing up there, that they put in a fence between the driveway that goes into the strip mall. And the driveway was, they had to scale back on that fence that they put up because of sightline distancing. I mean, uh, going into, out of the Burger King parking lot and into that driveway. So that may have been, uh, what this is referring to. I'm not for sure, but that, uh, that was one of the concerns that they did have to go back and look at.
Yeah, it does, it does say maintenance bond. I just wasn't sure which one for. Thank you. And then I just, I wanted to say to the rent leveling, um, board, I'm happy to see, um, that there is a resolution here fifteen twenty-two that, um, will be, um, well, it's proposed to hire a, an independent attorney to, um, assist with any rent leveling board, complaints that they may receive either by owners, landlords, or tenants, so, um, that, that's great guidance. Happy to see that on, on, uh, the agenda as well. That's it for me, Council President.
Any other questions? No, okay.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some of second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented. Ordinances on second and final reading, twenty-six sixty-seven dash twenty-one, and ordinance amending chapter twenty-five of the, of the revised general ordinances of West Orange, excuse me, of West Orange, authorizing and encouraging electric vehicle supply slash service equipment and make ready parking spaces. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second, thank you. Councilwoman Castellino?
Uh, yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
My response is yes, but were we supposed to have a public comment before we took the vote?
Now, this is to introduce on second and final reading.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. Uh, Council President Susan McCartney?
Yes. Okay, now, if you have any questions? Councilwoman?
No, I'm just trying to get us through this agenda, that's all.
Councilwoman Matute Brown, you did say you had a question on this ordinance before?
I did.
No public comment.
Hearing, public comment on this?
Yeah, we have to have a public hearing.
I'll, I'll go ask if there's no other, um, questions for the public or comments.
Any members of the public that wish to ask a question about this ordinance? Please raise your hands.
I don't only ask a question, but to make a comment.
Yeah, that's true. Any members of the public that have a comment? Yes. We have one. Darren Tobia. Darren, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, everyone. Twenty-four Columbia Street, Darren Tobia.
Aaron.
I just want, I'm not sure, can I make a comment about the steep slope or, uh, steep slope, uh, ordinance?
Now, this is only for this particular ordinance.
Okay, great, thanks.
Darren, uh, Darren, on that steep slope ordinance, we have not made the amendment yet. So we are just approving the CME engineers to work on the ordinance.
I see. Thanks so much.
Great. Any other members of the public that wish to make a comment? Okay, not seeing any. Does the council have any questions or comments?
I, 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 thank you. Uh, my, my question was, and I know that the council did discuss this, um, briefly during introduction, and we did make some, um, comments with respect to, uh, or recommendations for consideration from the planning board. Um, and I know that the letter that was introduced from the chairman, um, does say that, that the board recommends that the council adopts. Um, can we mute that the council adopts the ordinance and offers no other recommendations there too? So I, I had two questions, actually, um, with respect to the, you know, and I, I really do, um, want to better understand, and maybe Mr. Kizer, if you're familiar, um, with the legislation that was passed at the state level, encouraging the use of, um, electric vehicles, and then as we move into creating this ordinance, we are encouraging and, and not requiring a certain developers to, to incorporate this. So if the state legislation makes a recommendation to encourage, a municipality cannot, um, set an ordinance that requires them to do so? So it's the question of, you're, you're muted, Mr. Kizer.
Oh, no, I'm not.
Okay, I thought, I thought I saw your mouth move and no sound.
No, I just, I had unmuted myself. Um, a couple things. Couple, first of all, I'm not familiar with the state statute. This is not an ordinance that I've worked on. And I'm not sure I understood your question. I understand there is state legislation regarding this and, and people want to encourage electric cars because of, it saves energy and so forth, and better for the environment. But specifically, what is it, what is your concern about this?
So I, I just didn't know if, if the, the legislation from the state required or it encouraged. So, um, I, if you're not familiar, then I can, you can't.
I really, I, I, I really am, I'm not sure of that, but, um.
I mean, obviously, if, if it's like any other statute, if it's not in statute, then it can be challenged. That I understand. I just didn't understand if the state legislation required or encouraged.
There is something called the documented preemption, and I don't know the extent to which that would apply here, but, um, often if, if the state passes legislation that's comprehensive and it's intended to dominate the field, then we can't go against that. We have to be consistent with it. Again, I'm just not, I didn't, this is not something I prepared, so I can't speak to it, and I certainly am no expert on, on the state legislation with respect to this.
Okay. I, I just had pause, uh, so that, because I think that if the, um, and the bill, the letter does say that, um, the Senate bill number is thirty-two eighty-four. Um, I just didn't have time to research this. Um, but it does say that it's amending, um, an existing statute. And it does say that this particular ordinance is in line with that, so I'm going to assume that this statute is in line with it because it is encouraging and not requiring. So that was probably a roundabout way of answering my own question.
Right, so you, you, you've read from the legislative history at the very end of the ordinance, which it does indicate the ordinance is consistent with the model ordinance authorized pursuant to Senate Bill number thirty-two eighty-four. There are many times when the state, um, gives us model ordinances and either we follow them completely or we can't.
At all, yeah.
Can't do them at all, so.
I, I will say, just for the record, that I am really disappointed to the extent that, um, the governor of our great state has, um, stated that, you know, we want to become, um, you know, rid ourselves of, of emissions by a date certain and the encouraging, although I understand fiscally why requiring it may be a challenge, um, but hope to see that amended in the Senate at some time in the near future so that then we can make sure that we, um, are very conscious to make sure that our developers are implementing, are required to install. That, that was just my point. I was just disappointed in that.
Councilwoman, um, Matute Brown, I wholeheartedly appreciate what you're saying, because if you could see the copy of my ordinance that we have, um, the hard copy, I have encourages highlighted, circled, question marks, um, the same thing. Though adopting this ordinance, there are requirements, and that's what was discussed, that those requirements that are in the state statute and also in this statute would require those applicants to provide X number of fifteen percent of the required off-site parking spaces. I'm just reading arbitrarily from this.
I do remember that, Council President, I do.
Talk about, know that they would be required to adhere to this ordinance, uh, and it is consistent with the state.
And, and but the unfortunate part of that is that, that, that ordinance that the state had, the Senate bill that the state has, um, proposed or adopted, because they've adopted it, uh, speaks to our ordinance that says that our developers that have fifty or more units would be required to have, um, uh, charging, uh, a fast charging station, which is, is, I think, the number two, EV two, as opposed to the three, because it just takes so long for EV two chargers to charge a vehicle, you know, and so it's almost like we're shooting ourselves in the foot by saying, okay, we're going to require you to install electric vehicle chargers. Um, you don't have to install the fastest charging ones, right? Because for me, that's a quality of life issue. If I have to wait around eight hours to charge fully versus two hours to have a fast charge. Um, but just again, hopefully we're able to, um, approach this, uh, when, when the state does, um, their revisions. Hopefully, if they do do their revisions at some point in the near future, that we're able to also change, ensure our ordinances to require the faster chargers, uh, from developers, you know? That's it for me. Thank you.
Council President?
Yeah, I lost the sound there for a minute, sorry.
I just want to add to the point, uh, the good point that Councilwoman Matute Brown is, is, has made. Sitting on a call with the sales rep, um, that visit us on one of our downtown Alliance meetings. I think the reason for that, again, I always preach this, but the techno, the technology has to catch up to the initiatives, um, and, and the pricing on it. I believe those charging stations that are supercharged are a couple hundred thousand dollars still, and I guess once they figure out how you could make one of these at affordable cost, maybe that's why they put that in for now, and, um, a- again, these are, you know, great initiatives, but, you know, they have to be able to be affordable to all. Um, so hopefully that will come sooner than later. But great point, Councilwoman. Thank you. Council President?
And if there is such a development and they do want to sell their units, I would imagine that they would do what would benefit their, their tenants. Okay. Any other comments? Okay.
Is there a motion to approve twenty-six sixty-seven dash twenty-one?
So moved. Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President McCartney? Okay. Ordinance twenty, um, yeah, twenty-six seventy-four dash twenty-two, and ordinance amending chapter two, section forty-eight point two of the revised general ordinances of West Orange Municipal Insurance Fund Commission definitions. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So moved. Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes. Any comment, um, Madam Moderator? Anyone care to comment on this, uh, ordinance on second and final reading?
Any members of the public have a comment on this ordinance? Please raise your hands.
This is the Municipal Insurance Fund Commission.
I'm not seeing any.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, any comments from the? You know, we kind of had a discussion on first reading about Secretary. Okay.
Is there a motion to approve twenty-six seventy-four dash twenty-two?
So moved. Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
Okay. There are no ordinances on first reading, pending matters, new matters, council discussion.
Any topics that we would like to discuss at this time? Uh, Councilman Rutherford?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to revisit the request earlier to, um, perhaps have executive session with regard to labor matters.
Yes, excellent. I see John is back. John, were you able to get in touch in any of the labor?
I, I would, I was not able to put together a meeting tonight for them, uh, for any of them. Uh, I can, we will certainly schedule it for the next meeting so that, to bring the council up to speed. I certainly, and I certainly can entertain any questions you have tomorrow.
Okay.
From a, from a pragmatic point of view, not from a legal point of view.
Thank you.
Council President, if I just may share something with, um, just for the general public who is still with us, um, this evening. While, while this council does engage in conversations with our, our labor unions, of, of which we have six in town, we are not, it's not within our purview, it's not within this governing body's purview to engage in, um, labor union discussions. We do so because the administration, um, does allow for that to happen, for us to engage with our, um, labor unions, just because we are a community that does engage. Um, some of them are neighbors, friends, and residents, but I just want to be sure to be clear, um, for, for those, um, residents, particularly the newer ones who may not understand, um, why we didn't have the discussion this evening. It's just that you're not technically allowed to, but the administration, um, does allow, um, for this governing body to do so, and I certainly look forward to, um, a speedy remediation to, um, to the issues that we're having, but just wanted to make sure that the- a speedy remediation to um, to the issues that we're having, but just wanted to make sure that the public knew and understood what our role was here.
Well.
Yeah, it is a matter of litigation in this.
Well, that too, obviously, but just wanted to let them know that, what our purview was.
Well, Doc, can, can I just speak to, I mean, the truth is that the council is a legislative body and really doesn't get involved except for approval of settlement agreements and, and negotiated contracts, but you do not, um, as a body involve yourself in, in labor negotiations and so forth. That's something that the administration is responsible for, just to be clear. And so, I, I don't want to go really beyond that, but the, just want to make sure that everybody understands that that that's an administrative executive function, not a legislative function, so.
Thank you, Mr. Kaser. Councilman Rutherford, I saw that your hand, is it still up or do you still have a question? Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Castellino?
And to my point earlier, when I first recommended to, to go on executive session, and that was just for clarity of the public's sake, is, you know, to get an update on, on the progress of the administration, which we're entitled to, not to, for us to negotiate with the administration. Just wanted to clarify that for the public. Thank you, Council President.
So are there any pending matters or new subjects that you, anyone would like to discuss at this time, not at this time? Um, we can go back to any announcements that we may have. Councilwoman Williams?
So, um, at this time, or is it permissible for us to do liaison updates?
Yes, we moved it to this part of the meeting.
Okay, great, no problem. So I just wanted to let the public know to be on alert uh, for an Economic Development Commission meeting, um, that will be scheduled in the next couple of weeks. Probably information uh, will be distributed for an uh, for that meeting online. Um, so just wanted to make you aware that we will have an Economic Development Commission meeting coming up. Hopefully for February, but if not during the first week of February. Also certainly wanted to update the public on the Historic Preservation Commission and look forward to the um, information forthcoming on the four properties that have been identified uh, for historical designation. So please, we did discuss that this evening. Uh, but stay tuned uh, for us as a council uh, to approve uh, that resolution. And also wanted to um, make sure the public is aware um, that the Rent Leveling Board did meet last week. Um, we met in a work session as opposed to a actual meeting. And so forthcoming, uh, we are still in the process of, of just updating um, our documents uh, so that we can function as a, a board. Um, but I also want to alert the public that we have not, in the one year that this board has been um, resurrected, had any applications except for an incomplete application that was presented in December. Um, and so even though we do know and are aware that there have been some challenges um, with renting and landlords and a moratorium on rent payments, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Um, the Rent Leveling Board has been meeting, um, has been looking to make sure we are a functioning board in West Orange. But again, and the history that board was uh, created uh, over twenty years ago and um, not functioning. Um, but of late, as we have tried to resume um, functioning, again, a limited amount of inquiries. Hopefully we will continue to get the word out. Uh, we want all of our West Orange residents to know if they are renting or if they are landlords. And if you have a issue, that there is help available on a municipal level um, to hear any questions, challenges and or concerns um, that you may have. Information is on the Township Municipal website, which is westorange.org. Um, so please, there are uh, documents that you can complete if you have any concerns. Um, if you have any questions, and we do have uh, Mr. Pete Smiraldo, who handles that department and is very, very capable of answering any questions or concerns um, that you may have as it relates to renting in the Township Municipality of West Orange. So just wanted to make sure that information is communicated um, to the public. Thank you so much, Council President.
Thank you. Excellent, and I understand that um Pete Smiraldo as the Housing Authority has added so much structure to uh, the min, to I was going to say the Municipal Alliance, to the Rent Leveling Board and also established committees so that it can function uh, very well for our residents. And the other council liaison?
Council President, I have my hand up.
You know, your hand is right on the picture. It is difficult to see. Okay.
I'll change the color so that it'll be brighter. Um, I, I, I wanted to just share, I thought the OSPAC was going to do a budget presentation. Were they not ready?
Are they coming in next time?
Okay, next time. All right. So for those, um, OSPAC, uh, the Oscar Schindler Performing Arts um Center Board will be um, doing their uh, financial presentation for the council. I thought it was this time, but it'll be in two weeks. So look forward to that. Just also wanted to share with respect to the Cannabis Task Force. We are looking to schedule a meeting and towards the end of next week. We have had um, discussions with the administrations for the logistics of the website. Uh, we do now have a page on the township um, website that is strictly for cannabis information. We will be posting the meeting dates, the minutes that uh, was shared with the planning board as requested. And links to the videos of the meetings that we've already had. Uh, just wanted to share that we've also discussed with the administration how we were going to be receiving applications, and I was informed by um our Madam Clerk that we have an email set up for our Cannabis Task Force questions. And that email has also been posted on our township website. And the two outstanding matters for the task force, well, three. Right now, we are look, waiting to approve our final application for the cannabis. Um, those interested in participating in the cannabis industry in town. And once uh, the Cannabis Task Force takes a look at that at the end of this week and the administration is able to put out a request for applications on the website, much like they do for requests uh, for qualifications or RFPs, uh, that notice will also be posted and, and will go out. Um, we're also still um, working with an eye towards the March third fifteenth release deadline for the, um, right now what's out is the cultivation applications, but cultivation manufacturing applications. What will come next is the um cannabis businesses, so the retail medicinal. Um, that has been referred to the planning board. I know the planning board met and we've received notification that they did not take any action, and the action that they were asked to, to take was with respect to the distance. A recommendation with respect to the distance from schools. So we do not have that as of yet. And also, we are removing the fee that's in the ordinance so that the council can set the fees by resolution and not just have them in ordinance. So those are the two things that um, the planning board will be discussing during their next, next meeting. And um, not too concerned about the, the, the weight in that because I, I don't feel and I think that I, we can all agree that there are no potential cannabis cultivation um, areas by schools anywhere. So um, you know, the planning board is going to take and go through its process and they have the information they've requested. So when there is an update, I'm sure they will share it with us as well. Um, but that's all of the information that I have for you at this time. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing the minutes. The uh Councilwoman, I saw a reaction.
No, I said, thank you, Council President.
I, and I said, thank you for sharing the minutes. The next planning board meeting will be on February second. So that review, all of that will be considered at that time. Councilman Rutherford, how about this time? Is this for real?
Uh, thank you, Council President. Um, two uh, updates, one on Open Space Rec. Um, Open Space Recreation Committee is forwarding a resol, well, has forwarded a resolution. Um, actually just today forwarded it to our uh, Assistant Town Attorney for his review regarding uh, requesting a uh, needs assessment um, townwide um, of our uh, recreational um, needs as well as the resources that we have. Uh, so wanted to uh, make you aware of that. Open Space Rec is, is looking to take a holistic approach to the outdoor spaces that we have and the needs for those spaces based on where the population is now and what types of sports and uh, recreation activities uh, townwide we engage in. Uh, also with regard to Open Space Rec. Uh, we have been working with uh, the New Jersey Red Bulls to um have them make a donation to the town. Uh, I am in receipt of the um, the uh agreement that we would have to uh, agree to. Uh, I kind of put the cart before the horse and I did not uh, speak in detail with our mayor, although the mayor is aware of what's going on. Um, so before we go any further with that, I wanted to have a conversation with the administration. Um, there are some open items there, uh, but by next council meeting, I would hope uh, that we can take some action in that regard. Uh, and that's it for Open Space Rec. Uh, for pedestrian safety, um, just uh, just last week, uh, Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board met. And during that meeting, I requested uh, that the uh, board uh, forward any particular projects that um, we have been uh, waiting to get done, but have not been able to get done due to funding. Um, as a result of Congressman Payne's uh, fabulous presentation at our last council meeting. Uh, and so they have put forward quite a few. Uh, I met with Congressman Payne. He was supportive of all of those. What I would encourage your council president to do uh, is with uh, the administration is appoint a point person for these various projects. I'm happy to help out. Uh, but we have a once in a generation opportunity uh, to uh, get funding from the federal government to um, act on all of the infrastructure needs we have townwide. Um, and so uh, you know, the early bird gets the worm. Um, if we can get in the queue early enough, there is no restriction on the number of projects or the amount of money that we can bring into West Orange. And I think this is one of those things where the council and the administration uh, will likely uh, be unanimous in their support. Uh, so whatever we can do to expedite that process. Uh, and I don't know what that solution is, but whatever we can do to expedite that, get as many projects into the pipeline as possible. Uh, I think we need all hands on deck and should do that. Um, that's it for me. Uh, I, you know, I could, uh, actually I have been nominated uh, for the joint meeting of Essex and Union County. I have been nominated uh, to be the treasurer. That vote will take place at our next meeting, which is on Thursday, uh, and we shall see what the outcome is. Uh, that concludes my uh, council liaison report. Thank you, Council, Council President.
Thanks. Thank you, Councilman Rutherford, and good luck with your nomination on the joint meeting. Um, I just, let me just say before I go to Councilwoman Castellino, uh, the point that you made about the point person. Um, I think each of us with our council liaison appointments um, to these many commissions that we have. Um, I'm just thinking you were talking about the needs assessment, that that is something that you can approach the grant writers uh, to look at ANJAC reports, Sustainable Jersey, um, grant opportunities uh, that might satisfy. I don't know what the needs assessment will cost. I'm sure that it will be an outside service. But that's what our grant writers are for. Tomorrow afternoon, I was going to say this during the, my council liaison announcements that the West, members of the West Orange Environmental Commission and our town engineer and even our forester and members of West Orange High School um, have a meeting with the grant writers. Three grants have come up, one with PSCNG and Sustainable Jersey, the New Jersey American Water Environmental uh, Grant and NJDEP Water Quality Restoration Grant. So those will all be discussed tomorrow to see exactly what you're saying about the green infrastructure and um our grant writers have been on top of that and uh, have sent these, not only these, but other grants out to us to, to look at. So if something is of interest to you or one of the commissions you serve on, please be sure. I think I'm saying that we are all our own point person and keep the business administrator included in that so that we know where we're going and, and the township engineer. So, um, yeah.
Council, Council President, can I just remark on that? I, I, you know, and I understand that logic. I, I think the magnitude of this opportunity um, and the number of projects that could possibly be funded uh, is so large that I think we need someone to coordinate all of these various spaces. Now, maybe I'm wrong, but it just seems to me for efficiency's sake, we would have someone who is able to kind of um, aggregate uh, so that, you know, we're efficient in what we're applying for. We are not being duplicative in our effort, and we're not having someone work on something in one space, someone else in another space, and then we find out that, you know, we could have uh, you know, been a little bit more efficient in the time, effort and energy required to, to move ahead. So that was the thinking around having a point person. Um, you know, time is of the essence. Um, politics can get in the way of these kind of things. And uh, if we're not um, quick to the draw, so to speak, and get our projects in the queue early enough. You know, God forbid, you know, who knows what can happen next year. Um, so that
And that's why I'm saying that John Gross and uh, Lenny Lepore would be included with them because they would be the headmasters of where we're going and the vision that we need and projects that uh, are going to come up. I do appreciate your comments. Councilwoman Castellino?
Thank you, Ca, thank you, Council President, and maybe I could just jump into this conversation plus give my other, my, my uh, report. Um, so last week, um, Ms. Brill and I, our downtown director, had a call with our grant writer. Um, because even as soon as we heard about this going to be passed, or as soon as it was passed, we're right on the phone with our grant writer. We are very fortunate to have very strong grant writers where they filter all of this to us. So even if we didn't have Congressman Payne on last week, even if we, you know, don't notice different grants, that is their job, that's what we pay them for, that they know to send this our way, they bring it to Mr. Gross's attention. Uh, if they're working with a few of us, um, particular committees, um, they'll, they'll copy us on it. But now with Mr. Gross being the business administrator, he's going to have to, um, you know, but, you know, he's going to have to instruct us uh, to how he wants to proceed with the mayor. Because at the end of the day, with all these grants, we could have all great ideas, everything gets submitted to, this is what the procedure was. Um, and it may change, I'll, I'll leave it to administration. But at the end of the day, the mayor um, approves the grants that we move forward with because a lot of these grants are very time consuming. Obviously, the infrastructure grant is, you know, amazing uh, funding. Something I don't think he's going to not approve of. Um, but um, if it's very cumbersome, time consuming um, may have some requirements. Some of these grant require that we have matching funds. Some of these grants require that we hire personnel. So it all depends on the requirements. Now, the infrastructure money uh, grant, that is not out yet. Um, last week, when Congressman was on the, on the phone, uh, he had mentioned about the, the restaurants. I knew we had money last year for that, and um, that is the money. As far as our grant writer knows, that there hasn't been new funding released for, um, for that. As far as our grant writer knows, that there hasn't been new funding released for um for that for business owners. Uh, again, she'll track it. So my suggestion is if there is something that a project you're looking for. Um, to let Mr. Gross know. So he could get it out to the grant writer to see with if any money's out there. For example, with the Partners for Health Grant that we were able to facilitate for senior services. It was a well-known grant that I heard about, so so, you know, that was an easy one, just like this infrastructure money. Um, sometimes recreation to Council President's point, Councilman Rutherford. Um, you're looking for some kind of funding to do a a study, that's a perfect email. Uh, through uh to find out if there's monies out there for that. It pu- it puts it on her radar. Most part, she sends everything our way, especially the federal funds. The transportation money each year, we awarded last year six hundred sixty thousand dollars. Uh, she works with um, she works with um, Mr. Lapore and a lot of those. Um, sometimes there's money with other cops grant every year, the firemen. Um, so she's, uh, we're really fortunate for the funding of the millions of dollars we receive each year with these grants, but. Mr. Gross, you're gonna have to establish that process because there is a lot of money available and to Councilman's point. I mean, you know, we we have to be uh ahead of the mark on this one, because it is first come, first served.
I I I would say, well, in fact, you know. We have over time established a process and that is using our grant writer as the clearinghouse, as the the central point. And they're you, they're very good about telling us like, you know, for instance, there's sometimes one grant. There there might be multiple grants for the same thing, identifying which ones are most advantageous for us, which ones step on the other. You know, which ones are more more or less likely to be awarded to us. So that process has served us well. Um, so we certainly would recommend continue to do that. Uh, we've. Uh, the the administration has has encouraged members of the council. Um, to participate with our with the grant writers directly. Um, and certainly we see no reason to change that at this point in time uh as well. Um, I think, you know, w- there, the concern about uh making sure that we're prepared is legitimate. Uh, and and it's certainly something that's on my radar. Uh, and certainly, um, you know, o- open to um, any and all new ideas. Uh, and and new ways to do things, but that that's a process that's already in place and. And that it at this point, it it seems logical to us uh to continue to utilize that those resources. But I do think a lot more people are going to be involved just because of the sheer nature of this and and I think that's a good thing. I think that gives us. More support and and we'll we'll, we will utilize the the strengths of everybody. Um, more probably over the next year than we have in the past, just for the reasons that Councilman Rutherford identified, so.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Gross. And what's really good about the process too is because we've been applying for so many different grants on the. Uh, federal level and the state level, a lot of the information, a lot of these, it's duplicates uh where we could. You know, we might have had information for uh data for one grant and now a new grant comes available. Well, all that information is there, you just have to tweak it. And that's what's so great about another, what I like about our grant writer as well. Is they're able to, you know, turnkey that quickly. It's amazing uh what could be put together in a in a week's time. And uh, it's also, like I said, very labor intensive, a lot of these grants, uh, we work for the Neighborhood Preservation. Program grant and that was very labor intensive for our uh, uh, for Ms. Brill. To get that information over to Mr. Gross, but um even though we weren't awarded this year. Uh, we'll be able to turnkey that information that we compiled and hopefully maybe for for this grant. Um, but as soon as she gets, uh, a lot of times these grants come out. And um, they're announced, but yet the requirements uh are not out there yet. So as soon as it comes over the wire or whatever, you know, email she gets from the federal government, we're gonna get that information. Councilman, so we'll be all ready to go and we'll know what the requirements are and what the projects are that we could apply for. Um, to that point also, I'm glad to hear about that needs assess assessments, being very involved with recreation over the years. I think that'd be a a great study uh to do. And um, and I know we've made those tweaks in the neighborhoods. Um, you know, we've taken uh baseball fields. Uh, Lancaster's one of them, we have a a grant now that's turning that into a footsole court for the kids, so. Um, we have a flip neighborhood uh ball field, so so to say. Um, Mr. Keo, Mr. Johnson's been really good at that, uh, installing pickleball this year, but I I think, you know, I'd be very interested in a study of that nature. So thank you, Councilman, great idea. Um, and to uh have some bad news this evening, I'm sure, uh, you know, everyone's heard. Um, the liaison to the Board of Education, uh, our superintendent will be moving on to a new district, which is uh. Um, you know, which is um tough for our colleagues over at the Board of Ed. Uh, I've had that unique experience in hiring a superintendent and it where it's a very interesting process. It's 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 a lot of responsibility and and it's um. Now, it could be nerve wracking at times, so it's um, yeah, I give them wishing the best of luck and I know they're gonna do a great job. Uh, you know, they'll get an interim, I assume, um, or they'll work on that, so um, good luck to them and and. Uh, Dr. Cascone's been a great communicator um for um the community, for the district, and uh he'll be surely missed, so that was. Uh, bad news there. Um, I'm gonna work on a council lia- liaison meeting. I was gonna do one sooner, but he, you know, they're a little busy right now, so uh next week or two. And as I said, the Public Relations Commission met last week, working with the downtown, uh, all focuses on the mobile app. Um, we want to get that launched in February, hopeful to go live uh beginning of March. I never talk about it. Um, they're they're quick meetings, um, they're very efficient meetings, but I have a a meeting with. My other liaison appointment at Deignan House uh this week, and I just want to give kudos to Debbie Salinardi. The manager there, she does a wonderful job in keeping our residents safe, flash, you know, past year or two hasn't. Has been tough with the COVID, there was a fire in the building. And just a remarkable job in uh keeping all the residents uh safe in the building uh in stellar condition there at the Deignan House. And that's all I have to report this evening. Thank you, Council President.
Councilwoman Williams.
So I think I gave uh most of my reports. Um, I think.
Yeah, the historic preservation.
Yeah. So in the essence of time, I think, I think all of my uh, all of my reports, the only thing um where we haven't had a meeting. Is economic development, and again, we're planning that, so stay tuned. Uh, West Orange for upcoming dates and opportunities to join in. That will be a very informative meeting. Um, so that we can talk about what economic development could, should and will look like. Um, in West Orange, at least um in in the immediate future. So thank you, Council President, for the opportunity, that that's all I have this evening.
And there are still participants here, so I I encourage everyone to visit westorange.org to look at the calendar. If there's something of interest and of course to participate and engage in these open public meetings. Yes, one more, yes?
Not a, not a comment about our liaison um appointments. I just wanted to, just in hearing some of the conversation this evening, wanted to just um engage my council colleagues and ask. Is there a need for us as a council to have maybe a a working session? Um, so that we could maybe discuss all of our liaison appointments, what our agendas are. Uh, for twenty twenty-two in those respective um commissions. I apologize. So we as the council could have an opportunity to maybe. Align our goals with those respective commissions, but that was just something I wanted to throw out there for conversation. I apologize. So, yeah, I just wanted to see if if other members of the council would be interested in having a working session. I know when we have a working session, we do have to have an agenda to communicate to the public. But again, we have some wonderful ideas, each of us are working um respectively in our commissions. Um, to move our township forward, but it might be helpful since we don't necessarily have. Everything planned for twenty-two, just to have a a working business section amongst ourselves. I understand that has to be a public meeting, um, just to, just to figure out where we all are and to to have those conversations.
Yeah, thank you for that. Uh, I think, I'm thinking my immediate reaction was that that's what our council liaison announcements are all about. Um, and I think it's actually too early in the year to have something like that. But I think that um I always enjoyed the workshops and I think that that uh is something that. We could look at so that we do have a clearer vision uh and the goals and objectives of our commissions.
And maybe if we could bring in our commission chairs perhaps, I I I don't know, just some, just some ideas, suggestions, just some things that I've thought about.
Thank you. Uh, I wanted to follow up on uh what council, I feel so informal, I want to say bill, Councilman Rutherford. Um, talking about before because he was witness to, we're talking about the grants and the point person. I think what we just determined was that John Gross is our point person, he's going to be because any funds uh will go through. Uh, the administration, um, and John would be that, that person. Um, and when the grants do come to the business administrator, usually they get distributed to the. Chairs and the commissions that are involved. Um, just last year, you know, the outs, the Arts Council was looking at that grant for the Safe Routes to School. Um, but to me, that is why I came to the Pedestrian Safety Commission meeting, the advisory meeting. Because that just seemed like the uh ultimate partnership that we needed at the time to do art. And have safety on the road. So there is also a lot of collaboration between the commissions that um, that we need to look at as well. Just wanted to say that because there is so, especially with the Arts Council, because I did mention that before, I talked about the planning board, the next meeting is February second. It's still virtual, seven thirty, again, visit westorange.org uh for the planning calendar. Uh, Wednesday, February second. Um, I mentioned the Environmental Commission is having, uh, we have a virtual meeting with the grant writers tomorrow to discuss those grants that. Are coming due, so we do have to um put our heads together on that. And the West Orange Arts Council, um, you know, their agenda, they have so much on their agenda already and again, visit westorange.co. W O arts dot org to see what they have planned. And coming up on January thirtieth will be the beginning of the West Orange Classic Film Festival. So this is something we have been doing, I think, maybe fourteen years now. Uh, the theme this year is um comedy. Thank you, Madam Moderator, for this. This, this has been going on for at least fourteen years, excuse me, I think. Uh, Sunday, yeah, afternoons at AMC, it was supposed to start last Sunday, but due to COVID, it's being pushed back some. Uh, tickets are fourteen dollars. Uh, two, here it is at two o'clock uh at AMC. The, if you go to West Orange Classic Film Festival Facebook page or the town website, there will be a place to purchase tickets. And there will be every Sunday except Super Bowl Sunday on February thirteenth at two o'clock. And this is our calendar here, we have a funny thing on the way, a funny thing happened on the way to the farm. It's a mad, 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 mad world on February sixth, Bringing a Baby on February twentieth. Thank you, Young Frankenstein on February twenty-seventh, Some Like It, Some Like It Hot on March sixth. And Abbott and Costello in Buck, uh, Buck Privates on March thirteenth. That does coincide with the St. Patrick's Day Parade. But I encourage everyone to do what they can to support the uh Classic Film Festival. They also have uh coming up in February, the Way Center exhibit. They have been doing that uh for a few years now and a reception will be held in Sun, uh, on Sunday in February, February twenty-eighth. The West Orange High School AP Art, this is to be determined because of the high school meeting virtually, uh, they went back today. Uh, and there are a couple of things on pause where the Saturday morning Bowie tunes, the Creative Connections. And there is going to be a partnership, we're going to try to create that partnership with Laura Van Dyke and the seniors for the right. Right for Your Life, the uh legacy program that Laura did with the senior citizens. So please visit W O arts dot org, um, plenty of community engagement there. Okay. Any last comments?
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. What, what do we have to get off you quick enough?
Hi.
Any opposed? No, the meeting is adjourned.
Good night, West Orange. Thank you all so much for joining us.
Good night, everybody.
Bye, everybody.
Stay safe.
Bye, everyone.